Rebecca, you are live.
Thank you, Nikki. Good evening and welcome to a virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. We are currently holding our meetings online and live streaming to YouTube until further notice. You can access the live stream on the city's website. We welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments and refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation and comments to the greatest extent possible. At this time, Nikki, if you'll present the flag. And all in the audience, I'd like to try it a little bit different based on some feedback. And Mr. Supalak, would you mind leading us in the pledge? Everyone else, if you could turn your video and your audio off, but still join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Beal, would you please call goals for us this evening?
Yes, Mrs. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Snare.
Here.
Mr. Fishman.
Here.
Ms. Call.
Here.
Mr. Way. And he's not present. And Mr. Supalak.
Mr. Way is present. I think his audio is.
Okay, I see him waving his hand. Okay, I have it. Thank you.
I am also here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we have documents and minutes. As the commission had an opportunity to review these items, seeing some head nods, at this time I'll entertain a motion to accept the documents and into the record and approve the minutes for the meeting April 15th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
It will move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Snare.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and plating of property are under consideration. In such cases, council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 PM. There are no eligible cases this evening for the consent agenda. At this time, we'd like to swear in those in-staff and the witnesses who are intending to address the commission, if you could all turn your video on. Anyone intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, please raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
I do.
I do.
Thank you all. Tonight, our first case is an informal case. This is Highland Glen at 7270 Highland Croy Road, case 21-05F. 58 INF, informal review. This application is a request for the development of a residential planned unit development neighborhood consisting of 102 single-family lots with a 12.8 acres of open space. A 42.2 acre site is owned rural district and is northeast of the intersection of Highland Croy Road with Post Road. Nikki, it looks like you will be giving our presentation this evening. So Ms. Martin, I'll turn some time over to you.
Great, thank you. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and consideration of an informal review. An informal review is an optional step in the planned unit development process. Presently, this site is zoned rural and the anticipation is that a request for a rezoning to a planned unit development district would be before the Planning and Zoning Commission at a future date. The site is located northeast of the intersection of Post Road and Highland Croy Road and is approximately 42 acres in size. The site has 3,000 feet of frontage along Highland Croy Road and presently contains two residences accessing Highland Croy and a historic farmstead located along Post Road. The remainder of the site is farmed. The community plan is a guiding document that is essential to refer to when rezoning of property is under consideration. The future land use for this site has two designations. One is suburban residential low density and the other is mixed residential low density. The mixed residential low density recommends up to three dwelling units per acre, while the suburban residential recommends one to two dwelling units to the acre. The community plan also includes special area plans where special attention is paid to unique site characteristics as well as corridors. The Northwest Glacier Ridge Special Area Plan has both general and specific recommendations. You'll see here in the schematic, single-family detached residential lots are contemplated adjacent to existing single-family. Additionally, you'll see clustered homes along the Highland Croy Road frontage adjacent to Post Road and the US 33 interchange. The Northwest Glacier Ridge Special Area Plan also includes a rural roadway character recommendation. This is a character that you can see already implemented in a number of neighborhoods along Highland Croy with generous setbacks ranging from 100 to 200 feet. Additionally, the community plan recommends preservation of the historic farmstead or a portion thereof located along Post Road. This farmstead is a feature that enhances the rural roadway character and contributes to the overall history of Dublin. The applicant has provided a conceptual site plan for this evening's consideration. On the 42-acre site, 102 single-family residential lots are proposed along with 12.8 acres of open space and six new public rights of way. The site access generally aligns with previously established access plans as well as previous proposals that have been before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The conceptual plan includes the extension of the Red Tribune Nature Preserve along the South Fork of the Indian Run. Additionally, the plan depicts at the intersection of Post Road and Highland Croy the preservation of one of the historic barn structures as well as a detention basin and gateway landscape feature. The net density across the site is proposed to be 2.4 dwelling units per acre, which is well within the community plan's recommendation. The applicant has provided additional information regarding lot sizes. Generally, the intent of the plan is to provide the largest lots along the north and east boundaries of the site adjacent to established single-family neighborhoods with lots reducing in size as they move south and west toward the Post Road and Highland Croy Road interchange. As you'll recall, this is consistent with the community plan recommendations. All lots are a minimum of 110 feet in depth, with those adjacent to Post Preserve 130 feet in depth. The width of the lots varies, although the larger lots adjacent to existing single-family neighborhoods are 75 to 80 feet in width, while the smaller lots located within the site are still a sizable 60 feet in width. Staff has recommended several discussion questions for the commission's consideration. One, is the commission supportive of the single-family land use and overall density? Two, does the commission support the conceptual site layout, including streets and lots? And three, is the commission supportive of the conceptual open spaces, including preservation of natural features and cultural resources? And of course, any other considerations by the commission. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the development team is here as well this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Who from the applicant is here this evening? Welcome, welcome.
I'm here, Charles Rumah.
Hello, Mr. Rumah.
And I'm here, I'm his, I'm Charlie Rumah.
Welcome, Mrs. Rumah. Did you have a statement for us or a presentation to add to Ms. Martin's discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add to that if I may.
Certainly.
So my name is Charles Rumah. I'm the president of Virginia Homes. We are at 485 Metro Place South here in Dublin. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and allowing us to present to you our new project, Highland Glen. Really, what I want to focus on tonight are two things, kind of how we got here and how we've gone about developing the current concept plan. So we were approached with the Gordon property a few months back when after the Schottenstein Real Estate Group decided to move on from the opportunity. They had been, as you well know, probably through this process for many years. And so we were approached with this opportunity, but before we got involved, we wanted to spend some time reviewing their current or the previous, I should say, zoning to really understand the issues and what happened during that process and how we might be able to get involved to create a successful project and alleviate and solve those issues that were raised. You know, we know this is somewhat of a challenging site, especially to be creative in the sense that, you know, it's developed on all four sides. This is really an infill type piece. We have Autumn Rose Meadows to the north, which is residential. There's the planned retail and commercial that's going through Jerome Village at some point, or Jerome Township, I should say, to our west at some point. We have commercial to our south. There is a substantial highway exit ramp, as we all know, coming off of 161 onto Post Road. Post Preserve is to our east and with that, we have three predetermined connections or stub streets in Post Preserve that will connect into our property and throughout to Highland Croy. So really, our layout is fairly constrictive. But really, so our primary focus has been to focus on the density and lowering density and creating a more consistent product throughout the site. You know, like I say, this is an infill type piece, but it's very much a transitional property going from residential to retail and then to the highway. We've been involved in this process, like I said, for a few months. We've been meeting with staff throughout the entire process to make sure that our thoughts were congruent with what they feel and what has been, what has transpired on the site over the last few years. We've also been communicating with the residents in the area and the most, more specifically, the Post Preserve HOA and sharing plans and having phone conversations to make sure that we're addressing all the concerns with this new development. So the plan, I think we've been able to put together a vastly improved concept plan, especially considering some of the issues that have been raised through the process. Now, we really spent time focusing on six primary areas of concern that we wanted to address. The first is the land use. We wanted to, we want to confirm that this is a single-family subdivision. There is no multifamily component. There is no active adult component. These are just, it's a straight, single-family subdivision. You know, we are looking at a product that's an average in price from 600 to 700,000. So that was the first issue. The second was density. Density was a concern, obviously, in the previous application. We've been able to reduce the density to 102 units. This is, you know, on 42.4 acres, roughly 2.4 units an acre. Obviously, that conforms to the community plan, but more importantly, we've lowered the density by almost 140 units from the previous application. So that is significant. None of the lots, in this process, we've been able to increase the lot sizes and no lots will be less than 60 feet. And we've been able to address the border of the site and making sure that we're cognizant of the Post Preserve neighborhood and trying to retain those lot lines. Next issue is the open space. We have 12.8 acres of open space that's spread throughout the community. These open spaces will be usable. They will be able to complement our site and will help preserve the rural character along Highland Croy. Along with that, the other concern, which has just been kind of raised in the last few weeks, has been the preservation of the barn. And we've committed to reworking the storm basin to keep that barn there and save that barn as part of our project. The fifth item we have on our list is the substantial setback from Highland Croy. We have 100-foot setback. We have, our homes are going to be fronting on to a secondary street, which will then head out to and face Highland Croy. We'll have extensive landscaping and mounding up and down Highland Croy, which will preserve the rural character. And finally, as I mentioned, we've tried to do our best to listen to the community, to listen to the city, to listen to the neighbors, to make sure that we're addressing all of those concerns. You know, from the last application, we've considerably lowered the density. We've created a consistent, single-family product. There's no multifamily. There's no confusion about what we're trying to build. So we've spent a lot of time trying to make this project a success for everybody. You know, this is an infill property that we have confines to work with, to make it successful. And in our minds, I think we've achieved a lot of these goals and we've put forth a very positive plan for your review tonight. I want to thank you again for allowing us to be here and thank you for your time. And I guess, Dad, if I've missed anything, you want to add to that or we can go to some comments?
Well, the only thing I'd like to add is to make sure that the commission understands that as the interchange is being built, that interchange will directly end up at the intersection of Highland Croy and Post Road. And that will necessitate the closing of Post Preserve Boulevard. So Post Preserve will be cut off from access on Post Road and it will be necessary for the Post Preserve to access roadways through our site to get to Highland Croy and then exit the site. So that's a major concern that we've taken into consideration. And the placement of the ingress and egress through the site is pretty much determined by our conversations with the Department of Engineering in Dublin. And we've conformed to those restrictions and made it work. I think that's all I had to add, Charles.
Great. We look forward to any comments and would appreciate any feedback on the site.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mrs. Rumah. Now, looking to the commission, we'll do questions first. We will hold our discussion until after questions. Does the commission have any questions for staff or for the applicant? Ms. Fox?
I have one. Just to do a little clarification. Nikki, on the north 1/3, which is lower density, I know that it's 2.4 acres over the average of the site. Is there a way that, like, if you were just doing the north 1/3, what would the average density up there be versus the density when you include the pink area on the southern 2/3? Like, if you were to break it up into partial A and B?
So the community plan obviously has two different recommendations. One would be upper, would be one to two units per acre and the lower would be up to three units per acre. I have not done the calculation as two separate, although previously I had calculated that as a 45-acre site, which was prior to the right-of-way takes, that up to 121 single-family units would be the distribution.
Okay, that's fine. I appreciate that. Okay, that's the only question I have.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is anybody from engineering here to talk about the intersection and the flow on Highland Croy, Post, Post Preserve? I'd like to get a little bit of an overview of what the city's take on that because that certainly will be, have a bearing on our opinion, my opinion, about the streets and so forth.
Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, I'm Michael Henderson with the City of Dublin in the Engineering Division. So, you know, with any proposed development, we understand there could be concerns with traffic generated. We do have requirements in place in order to handle those concerns properly, which will be addressed as part of a rezoning preliminary development stage of a project, which will include the generation of a traffic impact study. So a traffic impact study is performed by a qualified professional engineer and models the traffic on the existing roadways, evaluates impacts of the additional traffic on the surrounding roadway network and recommends mitigation measures for these impacts. So those will be items that will be further discussed and analyzed as part of the preliminary development plan and rezoning application should the project move forward.
Mr. Grimes, did that answer your question?
It sounds like it's a ways off.
So did I understand that correctly, Mr. Henderson, that it would be prior to the rezoning preliminary, the preliminary rezoning application? The traffic study?
Yeah, so discussions regarding traffic, you know, projected traffic flows and mitigation measures as a result of the traffic generated from the development would be part of the rezoning application. I did also want to mention there are projects in our current adopted CAP that are set up to handle the Post Preserve neighborhood access prior to the completion of the interchange construction, one of which, the project is the Post Preserve access modification, which will extend Springview Lane and Stillhouse Lane to a single street, creating a new access point on the Highland Croy Road. This project is required by ODOT to eliminate the Post Preserve Boulevard intersection with Post Road due to the change in limited access right-of-way for the upgraded interchange at 33161 Post Road. And then our currently adopted CAP also has an intersection improvement project for that newly created, the Highland Croy Road. So there are projects currently in our CAP that account for those improvements, but also recognizing that, you know, this potential development also could accommodate those improvements as well.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Michael, is the, is the new, I guess it's on-ramp, off-ramp, is that yet calendarized? Are we marching towards a timeline on it?
Yeah, so that project, the 16133 Post Road Interchange Project is expected to go to bid in early 2022 and our tentative construction completion date is June of 2025.
Got it.
Mr. Snare, did you have a question?
I had a question. Nikki, I didn't see anything in the planning report. Do you have any comment on the consultant's report, the preservation consultant? Staff agree, disagree? What's the staff's recommendation with respect to that?
Yeah, for sure. So the city did engage a historic preservation consultant that we use elsewhere in the city regarding historic properties. The property located along Post Road is identified within the city's historic and cultural assessment that was adopted by city council in 2017. So this specific review prepared by the consultant was based on a site visit. So she was actually able to view the barns as well as the structures. And her two primary recommendations, based on the National Park Service integrity markers, which there are seven of her recommendations were, that ideally, the entire farmstead would be preserved intact because it is the collection of buildings that makes them historic. Although she also identified that if only one structure were to be preserved, the largest barn on its own meets all the eligibility criteria to be considered historic. So staff is supportive of those recommendations and acknowledges that the applicant has selected the latter of the two recommendations, although that item is captured in one of the discussion questions for the commission's consideration tonight.
Is it, is it the staff's recommendation that the applicant's offer to retain the barn is sufficient? Or do you have a position on that?
I, we do not have a position on that. I think out of the discussion this evening, we'll be able to provide more concrete direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fox, did you have a question?
No, I think I'll wait for the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Way?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I've had a really bad connection for the past 10 minutes, so I've been rebooting my computer, my phone. If I've asked something that's already been asked, I apologize. I was just curious, are the intersections with Highland Croy Road predetermined, fixed? Or is there flexibility in those intersections?
They are largely predetermined. So this is consistent with access management plans that were approved by city council in 2006.
Okay. And then I had a question. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We should mention that Union Township is also part of the mix on Highland Croy since Highland Croy Road is in Union County and they're part of the determination. At least that was what we were told in terms of access points on, through our site.
Yeah, so that's an excellent point. As part of the previous development applications, there was significant coordination between the City of Dublin engineer and the Union County engineer to agree upon these access locations. Thank you.
Yeah, Nikki, just for everybody, an observation is that Highland Glen Drive, I was just observing that if you moved it further to the north, it would be kind of equally spaced between all of the intersections and perhaps that would just create a safer kind of circulation system. So I just was wondering if, why that was not done that way. So I think you've explained that. I also had a question about the pink lots and whether the developer gave any consideration to locating the pink lots along Stillhouse Lane, along the entire length, and letting the yellow lots be along the entire length of Freedom Drive so that there's a layering of, you know, kind of larger, smaller lot as you move to the west? That's a question.
We're looking at the 60-foot lots to be one project and probably an empty nester project with similar home styles that would be much like the products that we've created at Riviera on 60-foot. uh, that would be, uh, uh, much like the products that we've created at, at Riviera on 60-foot lots. So, we'd, we'd like them to all be together. And, and, and this gives us that opportunity to go back-to-back.
I think the other part of that was to, uh, keep the width of the lots wider that are, that are adjacent to Post Preserve.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ruma, I just have one clarifying question. You concentrated, uh, in your presentation on the six areas of concern, and I just wanted to make sure that I gathered those appropriately.
Sure.
Um, just very succinct on each one. Uh, land use, density, open space, preservation, setback from Highland Croy, and community engagement.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, but can we get some clarification on the, uh, historical side? I read the historical report. Um, uh, it, it looks to me like it's going to be right next to the water feature. Uh, it, it, are we, are we saving the house? Or are we, we're just saving the barn? Are we saving the entire project? If we are, who's going to restore it? I, I looked at the house today. It looks pretty rough, um, I, I, from what I could see from the road. Um, uh, can you tell me exactly what's going to happen with that?
So, based on the information we have today, we cannot, uh, say exactly what will happen with that, but I can provide, um, some typical scenarios. So, in other neighborhoods that have come before, um, in Dublin that have contained historic structures, um, when they are preserved, they are dedicated to the city in a reserve of open space. And not only are they dedicated to the city, the city would also maintain that open space. Um, so the city, um, effectively becomes the owner and maintainer of that historic, um, and cultural resource. Um, the, the consideration of how many structures are preserved or which structures are preserved, um, is something for the commission to consider this evening as part of one of your discussion questions. And, uh, regarding the proximity of the basin, as the site layout is further refined with the preliminary development plan and further engineering studies are done to understand the necessary volume, um, there potentially will be a resizing or reconfiguration of that basin, although generally it will be an allocation.
Okay, so the city would own that site, and that would be up to them to decide what to do. Is that what you're saying?
Um, the decision on what to do, so to speak, would be determined by this commission and city council with the rezoning, although the city would own it. So, in terms of long-term maintenance and restoration, in the past, that has been, um, a task the city has taken on.
Warren.
Nicole.
I'm sorry.
You're good, Charlie. Go ahead.
Uh, Warren, if I might, I, I, I just want you to understand that the lowest part of this property is, is adjacent to Post Road. It, it goes from north to south, uh, with the southern portion of this property, where the, where the house and, and barn are, is the lowest point of the property. And at the, at the outset of our plan, we did not have preservation included and, for any of the buildings. Uh, most of them, we thought were in disrepair, although the, the barn may be in the, the best shape of any of the structures out there. Uh, I would, I, so we, we, uh, we thought it was important when we read through the zoning of the previous application and the discussion of, of, uh, concern about historic preservation of the barn, for us to include that in our plan and to make provisions by reshaping the, the pond along Post Road and, and providing for, uh, an adequate space to, to maintain and, and preserve the barn.
Thank you, Mr. Ruma.
I have no problem with that. Okay.
Nicole, I was going to ask.
Uh, so Nikki, just one clarifying question. Um, sorry, Ms. Martin. Uh, in typical historic cases where there has been a dedication of, of, of historical resource to the city, does the dedication of that resource happen after the, uh, open space improvement, so to speak? Those, those on-ground areas? If so, what does that transaction look like? What is timing look like? Is it at the front of the project, at the rear of the project? Can you just talk us through historically when we have had a parcel that meets these similar type of criteria? What that, what that evolution looks like?
So, I can tell you that we've not encountered, um, a situation quite like this in recent history. Um, and obviously, you know, procedures and orders of operation do fluctuate slightly over time. Um, so we would have to pursue further coordination with the developer, um, and with the City of Dublin, including, um, you know, the Director of Development and the Director of, uh, Facilities. I can tell you that dedication of reserves of open space happens when, um, well, the framework is generally established with the preliminary development plan and preliminary plat, but the actual dedication of open space happens when the final plat is recorded, um, with Union County.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Supalak?
I'm sorry. If, if I might, um, we've, we have been involved in the preservation of a barn, uh, that is in a similar situation. It was at Wedgewood Glen of Smoky Row in Dublin. Uh, at that time, we, we, uh, it was the conine farm. Uh, we, we were able to, uh, proceed ahead with development. We, we, uh, we, uh, protected the, the structure of the barn, uh, from development. And when we were completed, the city came in and, and then, uh, over the next few years, uh, rehabbed and, and, uh, restructured that barn for historic preservation. So, it's, it's something we've done before and, and, uh, can be done. You just have to make sure that everybody's aware of what we're doing, and we have to make sure that people stay away from it.
Thank you for that clarity, Ms. Ruma. Mr. Supalak?
Um, so, I, how about this? I was going to make two, two comments. One is, and maybe, maybe Rebecca, this is relative to your, your, um, question on it. I, I think it would be problematic for us to, we would potentially put these landowners in sort of a double jeopardy situation if we asked for the, you know, asked for them to dedicate the land to, to us. And then, oh, by the way, penalize them because they gave up their open space, right? Like, I don't know, there, I know there's legalities and all of it, but I'm just, I'm pointing that out so that, um, we're, we're collectively mindful of it. Nikki's raising her hand.
Sorry, Mark. So, it would still count toward their, uh, required open space?
Perfect. That, that's what I want. Yeah, that's a good clarification. Uh, Nikki, I was also going to ask, so relative to, I mean, um, I guess relative to all this, who, who and how and when does whatever that preservation site becomes, who designs that? I mean, there's a certain amount of, we're asked, we, with this commission tonight, I think is being asked for, is it one building? Is it all the buildings, right? Um, and of course, the, whether it's one or, or all of them has ramifications on the pond and all that stuff. But we'd be making that decision blind of what we actually think we're going to do with it, aside from just preserve it. Um, how it'll mesh with everything else. And, and I'm wondering, at this stage in the, in the process, is that, is that sort of parks and recs gets involved, parallel path? Um, relative to the Rumas and Virginia Homes? And, you know, I mean, we see those things in concert?
So, there would be conceptual open space design provided with the preliminary development plan, but open space is not, uh, fully designed until a final development plan. Um, so really, the preliminary development plan just sets up the framework. Um, these are all details that staff and the developer are very, uh, well-versed in resolving. Um, so I think we're just asking generally for the commission's feedback, particularly on the land use, the site layout. Uh, and it, it does seem like, I'm hearing some consensus that there should be some preservation of some kind. So, um, you know, I, Jenny, do you have anything else to share?
I was on the same path as you. It, ultimately, that's, we wanted some feedback about what, sort of what you're, what's meeting their criteria? What's the code and the community plan? And if there is a desire for preservation of one or all? And again, I think the direction could be, let's look at what that might look like. And again, no formal final decision has to be made today. I think we want to understand to the extent that we should try to preserve it all or we should try to just, we think the barn by itself is sufficient enough. So, I think that's for us to know and the applicant to know what's the commission's.
Perfect.
The previous proposal had no, nothing, so we wanted to just catch that.
Thank you for that clarity. Are there any questions? I, I, I want to make sure that we're delineating the, the questions from the deliberations. So, if we have any other questions, if we could get those answered, and then we can segue into deliberation. Mr. Fishman?
Just a quick question. I, no matter what, what is decided about the historical site, I don't know that we're qualified to make that decision, but, uh, which building should be saved, which building shouldn't. But that will not affect, I assume, the, the site. It might affect the shape of the detention spot, uh, site, but I assume because, uh, runoff, it won't affect the size of the, of the retention, uh, pond. Is that correct?
So, all of those items would require further study. Um, the development team has a, a civil engineer that they've engaged. Um, and with a future application, you would see more detail, but all of the stormwater on the site would be managed, uh, per the City of Dublin stormwater regulations.
And I assume that's a detention, not retention, correct? It's going to be wet, right?
It is open water, yes.
Good.
So, I also just wanted to mention there are, there are other stormwater control measures that could be proposed. It doesn't have to just be retention basins, which are wet basins. Detention basins are the dry basin. So, there are certainly other controlled measures that could be utilized. There could be a combination of wet basins with fire retention, um, permeable pavers. There's other underground storage is another option. So, um, that's just another consideration as the project moves forward, we would look at with the design engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any final questions from the commission? Thank you, staff and Mr. Ruma and Mr. Ruma. I'm looking to the commission for deliberation. At this time, we're asked to focus. Nikki, would you mind presenting the three item, oh, excuse me, the four items from the staff presentation? We're asked to being, to consider, uh, if we are supportive of the single-family land use and overall density, the conceptual site layout, including streets and lots, the general concept of open spaces, including preservation of the natural features and the cultural resources, and then any other considerations deemed worthy by the commission. So, looking to focus on those four, including the other considerations, which kind of opens it up a little bit further. Ms. Fox, would you like to start us off this evening?
Sure. Um, well, first of all, um, Mr. Ruma, I want to thank you for, uh, engaging the residents at Post Preserve. That is, um, that is one of the first things we look for, and the fact that you bothered to do that and that you, um, began your layout with those concerns, um, in, for front of your thoughts is, um, something that we really, um, recommend and we're appreciative of. Um, I have some thoughts. I am glad to see that they're single-family, but I'm also very open to cluster homes. Um, I am not opposed to a little bit more density, um, certainly in that southern third portion or the, the southern half or two-thirds of it. I would, I would like to ask you if you had given any thought to a more organic layout. Um, I understand, you know, why you did the northern portion. You only have a small piece there between the nature preserve and the north end, and certainly that's, so, doesn't have much room for, uh, layout. But, uh, what is the possibility of, um, maybe a more organic cluster home style of, uh, development on the, on the lower two-thirds? That would, that would break up the linear layout of a typical suburban, um, development. And I guess I would point to, and I'm sure you're very familiar with, like, pocket neighborhoods. One of the, one of the reasons I ask this is because you have two great amenities on this property, even though it's very, um, restricted because it's, it's long and narrow. One is the historic farmstead, which, uh, is a gateway entrance to Highland Croy and kind of buffers the commercialization and the, and the, uh, the roadway infrastructure as you come into it. I would definitely prefer the entire homestead be preserved, not the tool shed, because I think it's just a concrete block structure. But I would love to hear what you'd have to say about maybe utilizing that homestead and various retention water features in a more cluttered, organic, uh, layout, so that you actually took advantage of that and people actually found the homestead to be a social connection. Might be a little orchard there by the city, might be, um, gardens that could be utilized by the neighborhood because the city is looking for these infill, um, developments to offer sort of more walkable amenities, places that you create a sense of neighborhood and community around. And that's an opportunity. And the second one is the greenway leading to Red Trebu. In our 2035 plan, we're looking at making a, a major east-west greenway that goes all the way across the city, and that literally would be the entrance to it. So, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can incorporate a layout that actually takes advantage of viewing these sites, these amenities, and not just literally backing up to them. Um, that would, that, that's, I guess, a question I'd like to hear a, a comment on. And then, um, uh, I think the third question, um, yeah, so I think, I think those are, that kind of answers the three questions. Other than tree preservation, um, I, those are, um, my thoughts. So, if you could maybe address that, I'd appreciate that.
Well, the, the, um, there are, there are a couple of things that we need to talk about. The first is that Post Preserve is adamant about having adjacent single-family that is, that is similar in nature to the existing homes in Post Preserve. So, we've tried to make sure that we, we do that. Uh, and, and, and you'll notice along our whole east boundary that we are, we are adjacent to Post Preserve, and we've, we've maintained, uh, a, a significant depth of 130 feet on, on those lots so that we've got room to preserve the existing tree line and preserve that, the, the fact that those lots are a little bit larger and will be, will be, it, will be able to, uh, at least, uh, uh, build homes that are similar in nature to the homes that are in Post Preserve. And that was our first concern. The second concern is the fact that we have three points of access that have been determined by the, the city as to where we can put traffic to and through this subdivision. And so, we're, we've got a roadway system that needs to be maintained. And you have to understand that the, that the folks in Post Preserve don't want to see a straight route, a straight shot through to Post, uh, through, through to Highland Croy because they're concerned about the traffics. Right now, they're on stub streets. And if we, if we alter that, those streets, uh, by, by giving it a more direct route, it's going to, it's, it's going to create almost a, a traffic way or, or a concern of, of neighbors that are currently existing on those smaller stub streets. And, and lastly, you said that the site is very narrow. When you take into consideration the, the streets and the size of the lots and the fact that we want to preserve, uh, uh, adjacent properties to adjacent properties, we're not left with a lot of room, especially considering the fact that we've got 100-foot setback off Highland Croy. So, we're down to trying to marginalize product. And if we, if we get into, into high-density a cluster, we've, we almost have to go to multifamily. And that's a no-no in terms of Post Preserve. Uh, Ms. Fox, I, I hope I've answered your question or given you at least a sense of where, where we came from to get to this product.
I do, and I, I wonder if Post Preserve, if you, if you were to take that pink area and, and you were able to do, you know, I think what they worry about in multifamily is that they're worried that you're going to build an apartment complex, right? And, and, and maybe I'm wrong. You spoke to them. But, but I'm wondering in, like, cottage clusters where you might get even a little bit more, um, you, you, you might even get more units in that pink area if they were designed in a way that they were clustered, maybe attached, but one-story, one-and-a-half-story, and focused on the homestead as a more neighborhood, you know, kind of like, um, I guess. and focused on the homestead as a more neighborhood, you know, kind of like, I guess, a cottage community, I guess I would say.
I think that, that we could do that if we had, if we didn't have the lots that are adjacent to Post Preserve. If you look at the, the lowest section, you'll see that there's, there's 11 lots that are, that are along that, that section adjacent to Post Preserve. And those lots in Post Preserve, some of the larger ones, as you get down toward Post Road. So it's, that, that sort of sets the, the, the process for us. And it gives us, we've got to have a road to service those lots. And once we've got that road in, it doesn't give us a lot of latitude to, to, to do much in terms of cluster housing. And quite frankly, 60-foot lots in my mind is almost cluster housing.
You know, you're probably, you're, I am sure you're absolutely right. I guess what I'm looking for, and I'm not opposed to the density. I guess what I'm really looking for is with these infill neighborhoods, and I don't want to take much time from the commission, with these infill neighborhoods, we're really looking for a more usable, walkable, socially connected spaces that people will actually walk down the street and talk to their neighbors. And I know that in some of these 55-plus communities and these smaller homes, one of the things that they absolutely love is to go and take a walk, meet at a community center, a little smaller, a little pool, go to a garden and that sort of thing. That's something we all want in our neighborhoods, right? And because you have the amenity of the farmstead and the Red Trebeau green space, that if there were ways, this is what I would, if I had a wishing, a wishing wand, that I, that I would orient these lots to become more amenity focused than they were just simply street focused, and not line them up quite so, so restrictively. And I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I'm just challenging, I'm just challenging the creativity of this here. So that's, that's how I, I feel. I, I would really like to see the whole homestead preserved. I think it's a great opportunity for the city, a good gateway into Highland Croy, and a wonderful amenity for this neighborhood if, if it could be utilized in a way that would bring a social activity to that spot.
But the, the report calls for the whole farm to be preserved. Are you talking about 45 acres?
Oh, no, 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 no. The farmstead, the historic farmstead, the house, the milking barn, that, reworked the, work with engineering to, to, to work out the water. But to be able to somehow make sure that that is a amenity that this neighborhood could actually go and meet, have a book club, have a card club, you know, have a garden, pick apples at the orchard. I mean, to recreate this rural sense in this neighborhood is, it's a wonderful opportunity, I think.
I'm not, I don't feel the same way about the house as you do. The house is really in disrepair and is, is almost dangerous. A lot of work would have to be done to make sure that that house is, is, is able to be utilized. And, and as you said, some of the other structures do have significance. So there's a milking shed, but we're going to preserve that as part of the bigger barn.
Right. I haven't seen it, but they're just simply asking for a recommendation. This would be my recommendation until I know otherwise, but that's, that's what I would like. But I certainly appreciate and understand the restrictions of this partial. But those are just my thoughts. I'll let the other commissioners make theirs now.
Thank you.
Mr. Grimes, would you like to go next?
Thank you. Lot of interesting discussion already. In general, I, I like the lots, the number of lots, the layout. I, I would say that it's a good plan. It's good for Post Preserve. I, I think it's good for everybody. But some of the things that I'm concerned about is what effect would this preserving anything, the barn or more, would impact on what the city would want to do with it long term? That in turn is going to affect how you lay out the lots on that end of the property. So there's a lot there. And even if, if you only save the barn, I mean, how, how will it be utilized? It could, it's going to have to be just a walk-to-only, because there's not going to be anywhere you're going to want many people parking in that area. So I, I get concerned about the long-term plan for that, that, if it's the barn only or anything, how, how is it utilized? So I'd like to hear more on that. I'm concerned about traffic. Highland Croy is busier all the time. And this designed intersection here at Highland Croy and Post is, I don't know how many different versions I've seen of it, or where, what's the current thinking of it. But then those, all those streets from Post Preserve into this, you know, they're very quiet streets right now, and they're, they're sub streets. They're narrow. There's a lot of traffic study that's probably been done for past projects. But, you know, those, those are concerns. To me, it seems like there's too many exits. But then, you know, that's all part of the removing the access to the entrance of our preserve. So, you know, I got, I got more doubt that I want to have overcome with more planning and, and other details that sound a little bit more concrete.
So, Mr. Grimes, could I ask clarity on your general supportiveness of the single-family land use, the overall density, the site layout? You, you mentioned the traffic on the streets.
Right. I am, I am in support of the single-family land use overall density, yes. The streets, you know, I, I'd like to see, you know, some of the details on the traffic impacts and the problems that may be. And then the, as far as the cultural resources, I might be in favor of the barn, but then that, but that would be about the extent of my support. And only that if we've got some sort of long-term integration into the city system. So I don't, I'd like to hear more later on that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, Mr. Grimes, thank you.
Could I, could I make a comment to Mr. Grimes? I'd like you to understand that the most southern point of ingress and egress is right turn in and right turn out. It is not a full turn access. So that, that probably is, is we have two full turns and, and one right turn in and right turn out. And I'm, I'm not sure that that's clear. But that, the, the access on the, on the most southern access that we're seeing right now on the screen is right turn in and right turn out.
Thank you, Mr. Ruma. Mr. Schneer, would you like to go next?
Sure. Just a few comments. I am, I'm supportive of the plan. I would also, could be persuaded to, to increase density if it were done in a creative manner. With respect to preservation, I, I think we have to sort of turn this around. I'm, I'm hearing that the applicant is willing to preserve the barn. So I think we have to turn this around and is the city, does the city want to accept that offer? I, I'm not in favor. If the applicant doesn't want to preserve anything else, I wouldn't propose to require that. And I can, I go back to say that with respect to Mr. Grimes' comments, that at some point down the road, we have to make sure that, that that offer is indeed accepted and what are the terms and conditions of that? So that's a slight way of saying, if this isn't done, then I don't even care to see the barn preserved. And those, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Way.
I'm, I, I think the plan is, is fine. I think the density is fine. My questions were answered to why, you know, they did certain things, and I think that makes sense to me. I agree, this is a very tight site. I think the linearity of it is, is kind of dictated because of that. And, you know, having followed this site for a number of years, I think this solution is the solution that ultimately had to come out to get the site developed. And so I, I think this is the step, a positive step in moving, developing this site forward. I would say that I think the, the homestead and the, the pond is a design opportunity. And I wouldn't conclude at this point what to save unless somebody goes in there and thinks about it as a design opportunity in terms of an open space. And, you know, what's, what's the purpose and the use of each of the buildings that might be preserved, if they can be preserved? How do they all tie together? And how do you really, I mean, it could be a very exciting little amenity for this development along Post Road, you know, from a visibility standpoint. And I think it's going to, you know, it's, it's a precious piece of land that needs some very specific design consideration. And out of that consideration would determine what structures are capable of being restored. And then if they're restored, how do they fit into the design and the plan in a really positive way?
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Fishman?
Yes, I, I, I couldn't agree with Mr. Way more. He said almost exactly what I would have said. I, I think that we've got a narrow site there. And, and I would not be in favor of any more density simply because of what Post Reserve has said, their worry about traffic and, and so on. And remember, we're, we're really close to 33 there. And so I, I think that's great. I think they've done a good job. I, the, the only thing, and, and the historical site, I was out there today, and, and I also read the historical review. And, and the house was, was added to, added on as late as 1970, I think. And so it's not like it's an English Tudor built in 1835, you know. So I, I think that Mr. Way said it best, that, that we should look and see what the opportunity, what opportunity is. Do we tear it all down? We tear, leave the barn? Do we do, I think that's, that's something that we should have experts look at and, and, and design. I, I, I would ask one thing as far as the layout. I, I think it, it's what you do with what you have, and this is what they have. But I would like, I think open space is going to be really important in, in this, this subdivision, even though it, it'll hook into Post Reserve. It, it's also going to add to the, the beautiful amenity they have in, in, in Post Reserve. But I think, I, I would like to see that one lot eliminated next to the water, and that would give a better open feature. I think we need all the water and green we could get to keep it looking like Dublin and where it is. So, and, and, you know, I wouldn't be making the site any denser. I think if, I, I think that the layout is fine for what they've got. And, and I think the use is correct. I think single family is what the people around there want. So I echo Mr. Way, and I, I think that's the only thing I would say is limit the one lot and, and, and have experts look at that historical site and see what the proper thing to do with it is.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Supalak?
Single family, yes. Density, yes. Layout, yes. I, Rumah, as I give you, I give you credit, this is not an easy site. There are prescribed, a lot of prescribed moves you have to make. And this is a nice treatment of it. The, the density kind of converging a little bit as you get closer to the major thoroughfares is a smart adjustment. I too am going to echo Warren and Mr. Way in, in particular. And maybe that's where I was going about understanding how a site like that, the homestead gets designed. I am not yet willing to say, to be in favor of preserving just the barn. I, I'd prefer to understand what we actually think we're going to do with it, that site, how that's all going to come to, come to fruition. And, and I do think to the, to the whole commentary Mr. Way had, that is a design that has to come parallel with, with all this for us to sort of head nod to the thing in, in its entirety. So however, that has to come to fruition. If the city has to get involved, if that's Parks and Recs, kind of walking, walking hand in hand along the way. I'm not, I'm not sure, not advocating, but I think that probably has to come to fruition. In which case, when it's designed, I could be amenable to reducing the number of structures that are preserved there. Rumah, as I, I will say, I, I'm excited about the, you have a nice sort of, you know, I mean, right now, it's absolutely conceptual, but you have a nice stone wall. You have a buffering sort of element way down by that off-ramp. At some point earlier in the week, had a conversation, preliminary conversation preparing for this with staff, and said, said to them that, recognize that's a great opportunity, and it's not lost on them at all. Recognize that that's a great opportunity as a gateway element as people arrive in Dublin off that ramp. So I don't know, I don't know how that will necessarily get designed and come to fruition, but I think it's a very big, it, it's not a, it's not, it's more of a Dublin, big Dublin moment than it is a moment for this, this community in particular. I think we need to be mindful of it and treat it appropriately. And that'll be all part of that sort of homestead design when it comes to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. So Mr. Ruma and Mr. Ruma, I'll wrap us up. Mr. Way echoed my, my thoughts just about perfectly, so I won't repeat them. But looking back to sum up the discussion of the commission and focus on those four main points that were brought before us, we are generally supportive of the single-family land use and the overall density. You heard some people say that there was a little bit of flexibility there. You heard the commission say that they were generally supportive of the layout. And of course, there, there's always the challenge of if there can be more creativity. I think that we're pretty hamstrung in this particular parcel, however. And then the conceptual open spaces, the preservation of natural spaces and that sort of thing. I think you heard, maybe, and we know that you want as pristine a product and as much of a showpiece for the City of Dublin as we do. And so we, we trust that as we progress from this conceptual design, where we're looking at those very broad strokes to the narrowing of what this particular project will look like, that, that we will work together and, and bring forward something that, that you are proud to build and that we are proud to showcase in the City of Dublin. I did want to highlight just a couple of things. The open space, thank you very much. I, I know, I can tell based on the application that those minutes and the discussions from this particular parcel's previous discussions were studied, because you, you hit the nail on the head on some of those. Additionally, the community engagement. I know Ms. Fox covered this also, but I wanted to highlight how important that is. As we look to build a community, build a community, this particular project, you will engage with your neighbors more and more. And so that effort is certainly and truly appreciated. With that being said, are there any items that you seek to have clarity on this evening?
I'm, I'm fine. I, I think it's been very insightful and helpful to guide the process. Dad, do you have any other clarity item?
I deeply appreciate the comments that were made by the commission. We'll, we, we're always attentive and try to make sure that, that we make any adjustments to the plan that need to be made to make sure that, that this is the kind of product that we want to present and we want, and, and the city wants. So that, I, I, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruma. Before I go to Mr. Way, I also did want to highlight, I know that we talked a number of times on some of the concerns that we have with the traffic impact and that sort of thing, understanding that the concept, this concept portion of the application process is the broad strokes, and we will get narrowly focused on those traffic studies and how those traffic patterns affect neighboring, adjacent neighborhoods. Mr. Way with that? Did you have a, a follow-up comment?
I'll thank Mr. Fishman. Yes, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me?
You're breaking up a little bit, but he can hear you.
Yeah. This is a terrible night for internet. I don't know what's going on. Mr. Fish made a comment, losing one lot, yellow lot. It occurred to me that if you did that, you could actually pull the road back to the north away from the homestead, because the two pink lots at the other end have a lot of space on them. So I guess the point would be if you could make the, the homestead site.
I think we're losing you again, Mr. Way. But I believe his point was by deleting this yellow lot adjacent to the retention basin there, that would allow the pink block to be shifted to the north as the most northern pink parcels are your larger pink parcels, which would then give the open space on that southern portion a little bit more depth by pulling the roadway back and shrinking those two northernmost pink lots and deleting the most southern yellow lot. Again, at the concept plan, this is not, you know, designing, this is not the time where we're, you know, solidifying items, but rather providing that clarity on concept and, and aligning seven personalities to help give you clarity as to what next steps would look like. Ms. Fox, did you?
I, I'd like to remind the commission that the previous application had, I think a hundred and, two hundred and fifty units on it. A hundred and fifty of those were part of an assisted living facility, and the rest were jammed into the other two-thirds of the project. We're, we're really trying to make this thing work and, and and, and stretch it to make sure that we're, we're meeting the concerns and, and objectives of Post Preserve as well as, as this site. So I, I hate to give up a lot anytime.
Understood. Thank you. And those, those types of discussions are probably better handled at preliminary platinate rezoning. But again, concept plan, broad strokes. Ms. Fox, did you have a final comment?
I wanted to just ask a question of staff. Since this will be coming before us, I think it's really important that we engage either council or Parks and Rec to answer some of the questions. I, I do have strong feelings about preserving a, the homestead if possible, you know, with, with the entire package. It is requested in the community plan. It is called out as a property to be preserved if possible, and this is a possibility here. So I think it's important that we have something to work with, so we have some understanding of what the city and the planning, the Parks and Rec department think might be possible before we have, are forced to ask this question of ourselves again. So Nikki, you can help us figure out how to get that going with, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we can definitely engage that working group as we work with the applicant to refine the plan. The only other thing I'll say while I have the floor, we've received no public comment this evening, just for the record.
I, I think it's important to recognize the fact that there are several buildings, and when you put those buildings on this plan, you see that it, it really doesn't work, especially in light of the, the drainage facility and, and the the intersection. I mean, we're really encroaching on, on what that intersection is going to look like and the, 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 the wall that could potentially be built. And if, if we're going to preserve the homestead, then we're going to, we're going to have to move the pond. And that means we're going to, we're going to be moving that pond further north because there's no other place to go. And that would probably create a, a loss of lots. And so we, we, we have to, this is a tough problem if we want to preserve the, the, the buildings that really don't have a lot of merit.
Hey, Nikki or Jenny, I, I, I guess I'm not certain, but relative to all of that, and, and Mr. Rumah, we, we hear you loud and clear. And even as this overlay starts to potentially demonstrate that that there's going to be space that will get pinched when the road, when the road come in, comes in. All the more reason, some of those factors, I, I think we just, we collectively need to better understand as the design unfurls on that. But my question for Jenny and/or Nikki and/or engineer, engineering Michael, when, what is it? Is it the Post Preserve Road, roadway that's right there? When that gets vacated relative to all of these plans that are in the works, what happens to that land? Is if, if we needed more pond based on this, is something like that in play?
So that's a fantastic idea and something we've already explored. So when we look at Post Preserve Boulevard, there are a number of utilities within that right-of-way. So even though the right-of-way point will be closed, the city intends to retain that right-of-way for utilities. There's also a water line on the north side of that road, which obviously you could not locate a basin over a water line. So
Got it.
We thought it was a fantastic idea as well. It just didn't seem to align.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I believe that we've covered the, the request tonight to give feedback. So going back to Mr. Rumah and Mr. Rumah again, are there any other items that you seek to have clarity on for this concept discussion this evening?
No, thank you, and just want to say thank you again for your time and your insight. It's been very helpful.
Thank you. And again, we will express, express our appreciation not just for the application, but the way you've gone about the application. It certainly is appreciated, and we look forward to partnering with you as this progresses.
Thank you again.
All right. Well, as I flip back and forth between my screens, see if I can get my agenda back up. All right. So moving on to the next item for informal review, we have Flex Industrial Building located at sixty-seven seventy-seven Crosby Court, case number twenty-one dash zero six one INF informal review. This application is a request for the construction of an approximately a hundred and forty thousand square foot Flex Industrial Building located within the West Innovation District. The nine-point-three acre site is zoned ID three, research assembly district and is southwest of the intersection of Crosby Court and Dublin Plain City Road. And Ms. Roush, it looks like you are our presenter this evening. Welcome, and you have the stage.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I am pinch hitting for Zach, so I will try to do this justice. And Nikki is here as well as Colleen and Rachel are here as well. So if there's any specific questions that I can't answer, they will. Sure, they will back me up here. So as you mentioned, this is an informal review for an application for a Flex Industrial Building within our West Innovation District. And the site, as you mentioned, is located in the western most boundary of the city on the south side of one sixty-one. So you can see the location here outlined in yellow adjacent to other development in our western boundary. To the south of this particular site is the VA Data site, and then to the east of this site is the Command Alcon Building. Zoomed in a little bit more, just so you can see a little more detail about the site. As Ms. Call highlighted, this is zoned within Innovation District number three. And overall, within West, the West Innovation District as a whole, it is meant to be very flexible in terms of the design and the code is very clear about what can and can't happen there. But also looking toward a, an expedited review process. So within West Innovation, applications that meet the code typically stay with the administrative review team. But in instances where code requirements aren't met, they're allowed the opportunity to submit an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get relief from those standards if the commission feels that that's appropriate for their site design. So that is ultimately why we are here before you tonight. Because as you'll notice, we typically don't see a lot of applications in the West Innovation District. So on the aerial here, you see the site location. And as you can see, the site is fairly unique, and then it has frontage on three public rights of way, which is very pertinent to our design that's proposed before you, but also pertinent to your discussion and how, how this should move forward. Should the commission be supportive of what's being requested? So the site is currently vacant. It is owned by the city, and this is a joint application between the city and Van Trust Real Estate, who would in conjunction develop this site as a partnership. As I mentioned, it has the three public, public rights of way, which makes this super challenging, but some, some opportunity for this building to be constructed for a future development site. In terms of existing conditions, we just wanted to provide a little context. So the right-hand side is if you're on Crosby Court looking across the site, and then on the right-hand side, you can see if you're standing on Hootchard, you see VA Data in the right-hand portion of the photo, and then Command Alcon is directly across with the little red accent roof. So in terms of the proposed site layout that's before you, we're really looking for feedback on the layout, in particular, as it relates to the parking number and the parking location and wanting to understand the commission's comments and feedback about that. So the proposal that's before you is a one hundred and forty thousand square foot building. It's meant to be a multi-tenant building for Flex and industrial uses which are permitted within the West Innovation. The building is broken down into warehouse and office with the majority, significant majority being a warehouse use. So as you can see from the site, the building is centrally located with access to access points located off of Crosby Court. No access being provided either on one sixty-one or Dublin Plain City Road or Hootchard Road. So really retaining that access on Crosby, which is consistent with how VA Data and Command Alcon are both accessed. So in terms of site layout with the building being centrally located, you'll see that there is parking on three, all three frontages forward of the building as well as then loading and access to the rear of the building. And the location of the parking is, as I mentioned, one of the items for the commission to provide feedback on. The West Innovation Code only allows parking to the side or rear of the building, which in this instance makes that really challenging since it has more fronts than anything, than any other. So trying to locate parking on the site in a way that makes the building accessible from the front as well as from the rear, knowing that this is intended to be an industrial and flexed building, has made that really challenging. So we've provided, this application's been provided for you to give some feedback related to that. Additionally, related to parking, based on the uses and the parking requirements within West Innovation, fifty-six parking spaces would be required. This proposal is considering a hundred and sixty-three parking spaces. And the reasoning behind that is wanting to provide maximum flexibility for a future tenant in that a tenant at this point is unknown. So wanting to provide that opportunity for marketability of this building for whomever would occupy that. And then in terms of building pavement setbacks as well as acreage and lot coverage, this proposal meets all of those requirements within the West Innovation with the exception of the parking setback. So based on the code requirements, the parking setback would be required to be thirty feet. And they're showing within the site plan that this encroaches within, in that to approximately fifteen feet of pavement. So that's another item for discussion and how that gets addressed moving forward. And then the last item to note on here is the stormwater pond, which is located to the south of the building and that loading area is a very linear feature that's proposed there to provide necessary stormwater, but then also to provide some opportunity for buffering to the use to the south. With that, we have some discussion questions for the commission to consider and provide some feedback on how this would move forward. So again, is the commission supportive of the proposed site layout, including parking location forward of the building and the stormwater management base and configuration? So again, really wanting to understand with the site having three, frontage on three public rights of way, that really provides some serious limitations for how the site can be developed and wanting to, you know, the commission's consideration and feedback related to that. The second is, does the commission support a parking adjustment to allow for these additional parking spaces to provide that flexibility and maximize future development potential for the site? And then the third question is, is the commission supportive of the front pavement setback along Hootchard and Dublin Plain City Road? And then obviously, any other considerations or comments that the board has at this time? So I'm happy to answer any question. As I mentioned, I have several others here to answer questions or provide comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. So this is a joint application. We have economic development here from the city of Dublin. And then who else as far as application, applicant representation for this evening?
So good evening. Oh, yeah, I was going to introduce you, Phil.
Okay, go ahead, Colleen.
Yeah, Colleen Gilger with the Economic Development Division with the city. And as Jenny said, this is a joint project that the city as the landowner is doing with Van Trust. So Phil is here tonight. I'll let him introduce himself.
Yeah, again, Phil Racy, thank you, commission members and Colleen. I'm Vice President Development with Van Trust here in Columbus, and we've been working with kind of Rachel and Colleen for a while on the site, and we look forward to your feedback tonight.
And then if, if I may, just to point out a couple of things from our perspective, we don't often get an audience with you, so I appreciate being here tonight. And as Jenny said, this is a challenging site with three different road frontages. So we hope that this building would accommodate up to four different tenants, so a multi-tenant building, which typically, you know, they need their, their own entrances. So that, that is why the site tonight has that forward parking in order to best serve the front of those four entrances. In addition to separating that parking for visitors and employees from the loading dock area. We definitely desire to place a priority here on jobs and production versus warehousing. So that's why the request for additional parking would be our desire this evening as well. I know that as these spaces get leased, we also hope that there will be more of the office and production breakdown versus the warehousing, thus another need for additional parking here. And it's important to note too, on that stormwater pond, that's just a placeholder, hasn't been engineered or designed just yet. We just wanted to make sure that it was at least included on the plan. But we do know that the site does drain to the south. So in some sort of configuration, it will be on the south side of that lot. But we can answer any questions. We certainly desire some research and development here and, and hope you have good feedback on that parking.
Thank you, Ms. Gilger and Mr. Racy. Looking to the commission for questions at this point in time. Do we have questions from the commission? I'm Mr. Fishman, do you want to go first?
I, I realize it's an industrial site. But when I looked at it, there's no room for landscaping to buffer it from one sixty-one or the other main road. That seems kind of unusual to me for something the city would own, since, you know, we emphasize landscaping and so on. So is there any plan for buffering it, especially from one sixty-one or in Hootchard?
Yes. We're definitely below the lot coverage on this site. And if you, if you drive out and look at the VA Data buildings along Hootchard Road there, it's got quite a buffer with the, the setback and the, the bike path and the landscaping there. So we would envision something similar.
On, on one sixty-one then, right?
Correct. Oh, yes, on, on all frontages.
Okay, so there would be landscaping. Yeah, there would be landscaping buffering on one sixty-one then. Okay, great. That, that was my first thought. Also, the, the water feature will be, is that a detention or a retention pond?
It has not been designed yet because really, before we move forward with this project and fully engineering anything, we really needed the feedback on the parking location and the parking counts before we could get to any stages with, with how the, you know, would function.
Okay, my, my feedback would be, I'd like to see it so you can see it from the road and have it as a detention hole water as another amenity, you know, on an industrial side like this with a, with a metal building, you know. So that's, that's my feedback. I don't know what you can do, but, but maybe placing it so it can be seen and also having landscaping. Use every opportunity you can since you don't have much, you know.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, I, I'd love to add kind of what our vision is on, on the look of the building. It actually, it wouldn't be metal. It would be precast concrete most likely. So again, we have frontage on three roads, but we really want that one sixty-one furnished to be the main attractive architecturally interesting, you know, feature. So glass on both corners, glass in the middle. You know, again, heavily landscaped along one sixty-one and then all the other roads. So we really want this building to feel almost like an office building. If the commission members are familiar with our Blazer Parkway project, this is kind of that type of building on steroids a little bit. We can certainly look at, at moving, you know, the water feature to the front of one sixty-one. But I think as Colleen mentioned, it looks like the site drains to the south. But we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that and see if we can maybe add that to the aesthetics of this building as well.
Thank you. Mr. Way, did you have a question?
Yes, sorry, my internet crashed again. I was just curious about Hootchard Road. Are there limitations? Double plans?
Mr. Way, you cut out right there in the middle. We, we got Hootchard Road and then you cut out.
Can, can you hear me now? What are you saying? Now you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is it possible to start road?
It sounded like, is it possible to connect to Hootchard Road?
That's what I heard.
And there is, there is not ability to do so with the way the, the, the site is platted and the way the road is controlled. There is, we are not allowed to have access to Hootchard Road. We are only provided access on, from Crosby Court.
Thank you, Ms. Gilger. Ms. Fox, did you have a question?
I do. Is this a, will this be a two-story building?
No, it'll be one story, most likely probably 32 feet tall. So again, you're going to get, you know, some pretty good height from the building. It would allow, we've had some tenants that look at these buildings that would want their two-story offices within the building. But it will, it will not be two stories initially.
Okay, that's my question. I have comments, but, but that's the, well, the other one would be for engineering. It seems as if there could be a compromise of some sort by taking away the, the pond area in the back and, and parking some of the cars, giving yourself a little bit more frontage on 161 for landscaping features and a much more attractive look than having two rows of parking. So I guess I would, I would ask engineering if, if it's possible to move that retention basin.
Yeah, so that's something that can be explored. So as was mentioned here, the, the outlet for the site is to the southeast. So that's I think why that was placed there kind of as a placeholder. So as I mentioned earlier this evening, there are other control measures that could be utilized. So as the design progresses, there could certainly be a combination of maybe some of that is a retention or a wet base and some of that's underground storage to try to accomplish some of the other goals and objectives that we're talking about. But that's certainly a possibility.
Okay, I'll hold my comments after questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Other questions for either the applicant or staff? Mr. Way?
I'm going to try this from my phone and I'm on video on my other source. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm just trying to understand the nature of this project is that there isn't a tenant. And we're, we're proposing this building that pretty much maximizes the site. We're increasing the parking. We have this massive loading dock area to the back. It looks like a distribution center more than flex. And what happens if that, that user doesn't come along and all of that paved space is just sitting there? You only need 50 spaces and you only need three loading docks. I'm trying to understand. I understand you're trying to create the opportunity if the right tenant comes along that you've got the facility for them. But if they don't come along, then there's a site with a lot of paving that's not being used. Can somebody clarify that?
You know, because it's a, a city joint project and we have some of those controls in place with, with who we're choosing to work with. What's nice about this building is that we both, both parties have a desire to, to go after certain tenants for this type of building. Out in West Innovation, we really are looking, we have a, a big shortage when it comes to research and development and production space. This type of building is highly desired in the Dublin market. We keep losing out on projects of industrial Parkway that are seeking this type of, of development. We too don't want to see this turn into a warehouse or a distribution center, which is why having visitor and employee parking toward the front of the building lends itself more to multi-tenant and to production space by keeping those employee spaces separated from the loading docks. Ideally, because this is in the Beta District area and along the 33 corridor, the Smart Corridor. We're definitely marketing this building to an entirely different type of, of industry and, and commercial demographic. We have very, very low vacancy in this type of building throughout Dublin. So the, the typical users that we see seeking out this type of space end up having more, larger office present on the front. But I can also let, let Phil talk about that too, because I know they've, they've built some of these buildings in Dublin recently as well. And they can talk about the, the types of tenants seeking this type of space.
Yeah, just to build off what Colleen said, I mean, we, we think there is a big hole in the market for this type of space. And again, it's a higher end manufacturing, production, warehousing type space. So naturally the cost of this building, you're not going to get your pure distribution users. They're not going to be able to afford the rent here. So the market forces kind of naturally weed out, you know, the companies that we're both collectively not chasing. And actually this opportunity came about, Colleen, I think maybe the middle of COVID where we had a user approach us about wanting to be in Dublin and we reached out to Colleen and said, hey, do we, you know, we'd love to do it in Blazer. It didn't work there because of just the type of different uses they were doing in, in the building. And actually, we were pretty far down the road with that user and ended up, we did have enough parking for them. Now they had a lot of density, so they're, they're a pretty unique company. But, you know, I think it's really important, you know, we're willing to take the speculative risk. I think to have something for Colleen and her team to market, you know, to companies and have it ready and have it be deliverable in months, not a year, is really attractive to the city. This, this project, you know, again, we're trying to get a little bit of economies of scale while 140,000 square feet isn't one of the bigger buildings we've built. It is a big building and we are going to design it for four tenants. You know, the cost of these buildings is rising. So if you were to build a 40,000 square foot building, it would be very cost prohibitive, especially today with steel and supply chain restraints. So we're trying to get, you know, as, as much flexibility as we can in this building to attract a different size of companies. And we've, we, we're looking forward to kind of working through this project together. So hopefully that answers your questions or builds on kind of what, what you were thinking. But, you know, feel free to ask any more questions.
No, that was extremely helpful. I love the partnership statement and, and I'm sure that something's positive is going to come out of it.
Any other questions right now for staff or the applicant? Okay, at this time we will, we'll, we'll close the question period and go now into commission deliberation. So Ms. Roush, could I have you present again the four items for consideration? So the first one is the proposed site layout, including parking locations forward of the building, stormwater management basin configuration. Second one is, are we supportive of a parking adjustment to permit the 163 parking spaces where 56 are required? The third one is if the commission is supportive of a 15-foot front yard pavement setback along Hootchard Road and Dublin Plain City Road, and then any other considerations that the commission sees fit this evening. So understanding that is where our focus is this evening. And then just one comment as we, as we go in. So my primary business is I, I, I work in kind of that distribution center. I, I work on the software side of distribution centers and just for scale, because I know not a lot of people know sizing, the smallest of our distribution centers is typically about 400,000 square feet. And so we go 400,000 to about 1.4 million square feet. And that's kind of your, you know, your apparel companies and, and your aeronautics parts and wine distribution and all of those kinds of buildings are in that range. So looking at 140,000 square feet, I know sometimes it's hard to understand those scales. So I just wanted to throw that out there. All right. Looking for commission discussion, Mr. Way, you start us off again this evening?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, again, I understand this is, this is a, you're looking for, you're providing, you're trying to provide the market, a building that serves the market. And so I understand all that. And, you know, I think the organization of the site, part, you know, the service to the rear, the stormwater management to the rear. And I can understand that this might be multi-tenant, so you need to distribute parking around the building. I, I think that all makes sense to me. I, I, I'm, the piece that I still want to know more about, you started to talk about the architecture and it's going to be glassy and it's going to have a front onto the Dublin Plain City Road and it's going to be a showcase. I, I'm not, I don't have that information yet to be convinced of that. And my, my fallback, not knowing that, would be on a, on a building like this would want to be, I would want to see more screening, like of the parking. And so burming and parking along the, the road edges would be something that I would be looking for in that situation. So the 15 feet is a challenge to do that, I think. So I would, I would, I am not sold on that yet. But again, as this, if this, as this project moves forward, to see what the architecture looks like and to see that, that whole showcase type of look, I could be convinced that, that the setback is fine. So I think that, oh, and again, yeah, I think I'm in agreement that, understanding that the parking is a requirement of this type of flex building. I just, I do have a concern about all the paving, but if that's what it requires to support this, then I'm good with it.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Schneer?
I'm in favor. I, I defer to the expertise of the applicant and of course the, the City's Economic Development Department. You know, they have a big hand in the development of this. So I'm not going to substitute my judgment for it on this project. So I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Grimes?
Thank you. I, I think it's a great and efficient use of the, of the parcel. I think Crosby Court appears to be more than able to handle the plan for this. Because of the way the property lines are drawn, it's, it's a little tough to tell, you know, the distance to the side of the road and how much of that will be landscaped. And of course, you always, always have to be cautious about, you know, how much that may need to be widened someday because the, the traffic will probably continue to increase. And, and so, you know, it's a little tough to judge right now how much green space you have or how much space you have to become green space within the way this is laid out. But I, yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. The, the stormwater has to be figured out yet. Oh, yeah, it's a lot of pavement, but I like the concept and the idea that they're going for to try to find that, fill that niche and need in the city. I think that's a good idea. And back to the 15-foot, it's just, you just got to see it more in context. You can't quite tell with these lines whether they're accurate, fair or reasonable representation of what's available within that space. But yeah, I like where it's going though. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Fox?
Right, so I obviously know that the city wants to have this partnership and I certainly want to see this happen. But I have a question. You're allowed to have two stories there. You had two stories. You could reduce all of that pavement. You could reduce the footprint of the building. You're allowed two stories in that district. Could you not go two stories and shrink the footprint a little bit and then satisfy, you know, everybody?
I, I know from, from the marketability point of view and the 33 Smart Corridor, there is a lot of mobility research happening in this area where they do require that high bay access to a drive-in dock from the rear. Those require special ventilation. And so a lot of those buildings tend to need to be one-story and just a very tall one-story. So I know that the, the building will have some slants to it, but I, I don't believe that two stories here would lend to the, the types of research and development that we would desire.
Okay, that, that explains it. And gosh, this is the first time I've ever argued for more height, wouldn't you say, Colleen? Before. So here's the, here's my only concern. I don't have a problem with adding the parking spaces because you obviously need them. And, but I do have a concern about the West Innovation District's principles and intent. And, and I, and, and part of that is there were some keys about having to do with open space and streetscape. And so we're really just talking about this 15-foot setback and all of this pavement in front of it. And, and so the keys are, in the West Innovation District master plan, building setbacks are important. Stormwater requirements are important in how we're using them, building heights and parking methods. And roadway character, especially on Main Thoroughfares, the landscaping along the roadway edges should be lined with shade trees, flowering trees and provide an identifiable character to the road. 161 is entering into Plain City. We wrote this master plan code because we wanted to present an example of how we can do it the best way. So what, so the way I feel about it is, I would be okay with one row of parking in front of the building. I really think we need a 30-foot setback on 161. I think there's opportunities for some parking to be put in place in the back. Certainly not the majority of it, but, and I'm not a designer or an architect or a landscape planner, but it seems as if there are some spaces where additional parking could occur squeezed into spaces as you come off of Crosby. I could probably get away with 15-foot on Hushard, but I really think you need the full 30-foot on 161 to really give you that entrance way along 161 that we say the West Innovation District, you know, deserves. Other, other than that, you know, I think, I, I agree with Warren. I think that if there's a way we could get some really nice water feature and using some of the retention basin out front, utilizing that streetscape to, to be sort of an entrance way. The other thing is the bike path will connect along 161 to the new Union County Trailway on Industrial Parkway. So if we narrow that up so much that we don't have enough space to maybe add an additional bike path along the front as it connects to Union County's trailway, I think we hurt ourselves. Especially since the West Innovation District is mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly, all those things that we say we want. The devil is in small details like setbacks of 15 additional foot. So, so I'm voting for 30-foot up front, one lane, one row of parking in the front and find the additional along the rear.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Sure.
Mr. Supalak?
Yep, perfect. I'm going to pretty much piggyback Jane's, Jane's comments on the 15-foot setback along Dublin Plain City Road. That's the part, that's the one that's most uncomfortable. To me, that's the only thing that's really uncomfortable. I'm willing to, willing to sort of relax on some of the others. I, I, I think generally, right, this is, this is, this looks like good, good development, right? It's maximizing, maximizing the site. The building is maximized. The, the parking is maximized. It's really pushing the boundaries all across the board. And I, I think, you know, the long and the short of that is, is you just have too much, too much things taking space on the surface now. Whether it's, whether it's the detention, going subgrade suddenly to find some, find some feet to, to give back or one bay off the building. I'm not advocating, right? But somewhere in there, and, and again, you tripled your, you tripled the parking need and of course that added, that added footprint. So somewhere in there is just a matter of massaging it backwards, I think, to, to give back the 30-foot parking setback along 161. I, I'd love to have the parking setback along Hootchard too, but I'm not holding my breath on that one. Entirely willing to concede, concede and make it a 15-set, 15-foot setback along Crosby. And aside from that, I really look forward to seeing the landscape plan and the architecture and seeing this all come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Mr. Fishman?
I will piggyback and piggyback. I agree with Mr. Supalak and Ms. Fox. And, and I, I have nothing more to say. I think that, that they, they, they said it well.
And I'll round us out. I echo the last three. So I am strongly in favor of increasing the setback on the Dublin Plain City Road frontage. I could probably give on the other two, you know, minor. I could probably give on the other two, you know, minor roads or neighborhood roads, but that major arterial, I, I think we need a 30-foot setback. 163 parking spaces, uh, I'm uncomfortable with. Uh, depending on what the use is, uh, we, we have entertained in the past where specific uses coming in have said we need additional parking for XYZ reason, or we need reduced parking for XYZ reason. For speculative, speculative buildings, the issue that we run into is typically speaking, even with the city as a partner. Uh, typically speaking, when a building is good enough, when a site is good enough, it is then not improved beyond the good enough. So, um, we, we've seen additional applications recently where, where the good enough stayed status quo. Uh, and then are there any other, so stormwater management, I realize that that is so early in its infancy right now that there's not really anything to discuss other than we're in favor of stormwater management. Uh, so we know that the city has capable hands to work on creative solutions, whether that be permeable pavement or other non-surface level. But I do, uh, echo Mr. Fishman's comments on it would be really nice if we could make that a feature rather than a requirement. Just to mitigate the, the, the water there. Any other questions or callouts? Is there any clarity that is required or requested? So looking to the applicant and any clarity requested.
I see Mr. Way has his hand up.
Yep, I was going to go to you to ask for clarity and then I was going to let him, uh, make, make another comment.
Um, yeah, I think from, from our point of view, um, you know, we're, we're hearing loud and clear about the setback along 161. Um, I think from, from our point of view, with four tenant spaces on the front of the building, um, the, the two bays of parking in the front, um, is something that, uh, is, is very important to us. Um, so I think we'll have to go back to the drawing board and, and look at, you know, potentially increasing that setback, but also trying to, uh, make sure that employees and visitors actually can park by a front door instead of by a, you know, a warehouse dock door. Um, it makes for a very long walk to, uh, to an entry point, um, if they're at the back of the building. Um, and, uh, I agree with that, with engineering that I think we can get really creative uh, with the stormwater, uh, here to, uh, to ensure that we can fit what we need to on the site, uh, but also make sure that, uh, the view shed from 161 um, meets, uh, your standards.
Thank you, Ms. Gilger. And it has been confirmed that there's been no public comment received on this item. So, Mr. Way, you had a final comment?
Yeah, again, I apologize. This is probably getting into the weeds too much, but it appears that there's a loop circulation around the project. But it doesn't complete itself. You have to go back out onto Crosby if you want to come back into the site. So I would just encourage who's ever doing the site plan to look at completing the loop on the site so you don't have to go back out into the public right away. That's it.
I second that.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah, one last question. I mean, what's the possibility of moving the, the building farther back? I mean, if you really need those two bays of parking, two, two rows of parking, couldn't you just move the building back a bit and deal with the retention basin either underground or whatever? So that you would be able to get your 30-foot setback? I think to me, the important part is the streetscape view into this. I, I don't mind so much that there's parking in front. I really mind that it limits what you can do with the streetscape because we wrote the code in a particular way. We should set the example and follow it somehow, I think. Um, so I don't know if you can move the building back, but it seems like that would be an option.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna study that. I think if we move that retention or we can figure out a way to, you know, pipe it or do something underground potentially, we can, we can definitely look at that. I do think we have to look at the curb cuts on Crosby. I think we're trying to get those to align. Um, you know, if we're too far back, we might be too close to that cul-de-sac ball, but, but we'll certainly take a look at that.
Oh, Mr. AC and Economic Development, uh, we, we certainly appreciate your being here. Ms. Gilger, you provide extra clarity to the project. So thank you very much for your insights and for the presentation this evening. We certainly look forward to seeing this move right along.
Great. Thanks for having us. It was nice to, it was nice to be in front of you tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
Yep, me too. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Uh, so the next item that we have is a new case. Uh, so this is Final Development Plan. This is for all our friends at PID 273 0122214. Application 21 dash 024 FDP. This application is a request for the construction of an approximately 8,000 square foot building with associated site improvements. This 3.3 acre site is zoned planned unit development district. Thomas Kohler Sub Area B1 and is northwest of the intersection of Parkwood Place and Emerald Parkway. And Ms. Martin, it looks like you are going to be presenting to us again this evening, so welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a final development plan for all our friends. The site is located, uh, west of Emerald Parkway at the northern end of the Thomas Kohler Planned Unit Development District. As mentioned, the site is approximately 3.3 acres in size. Access is provided, uh, via a private drive from Emerald Parkway. This private drive is part of the subject parcel in question, although also provides access uh, to the Gardner School, uh, which is located immediately to the east of the site as well as to the BMI Federal Credit Union, which is located immediately to the south of the site. The site is presently undeveloped and includes a shared stormwater management basin in the northeast corner as well as a shared use path that extends along the western edge. The western edge of the site is, uh, the location of a landscape buffer that provides separation between, uh, commercial properties and the neighborhood to the west. Here are some existing conditions of the site. You'll see the stormwater management basin as well as the undeveloped nature of the site. In the background of the left-hand picture, you can see the existing, uh, tree stand that provides separation from the surrounding neighborhood. Here are the surrounding, uh, structures with BMI and the Gardner School. You'll see here the primary permitted materials within the Thomas Kohler Planned Unit Development are brick and stone. Buildings are required to be earth toned and warm in color. The, uh, site plan is largely as presented in January of 2021 to the Planning and Zoning Commission when this was before you informally. This evening's final development plan aligns with the majority of the items provided in the preliminary development plan or the development text for the planned district. The use of the proposed, uh, 8,200 square foot building is as an adult daycare with 26 parking spaces, meeting all requirements. Access is provided via the private drive with a circular, circular landscape island and turnaround. The proposed landscape plan is shown on the screen. Highlighted in green is the landscape buffer that is been established in this planned district. The landscape buffer requirements, uh, include both a mound as well as a split rail fence. The applicant, uh, has indicated a mound on the plans, however, in coordination with the city's landscape zoning inspector, staff is recommending a minor text modification to eliminate the requirement of the mound as it conflicts with an existing mature tree stand while retaining the split rail fence and landscape detail as it enhances the character of the rear of the property along the publicly accessible shared use path. Uh, architectural elevations are provided for the commission's approval this evening. The structure is, uh, square in site plan and pure middle in form. The pitch of the roof is five over 12, where six over 12 is permitted. Therefore, a minor text modification is requested to that development standard. You'll see here that the building is proposed to be primary, primarily cladded in brick as well as, uh, stucco and, uh, stone. Additional elevations are also provided for the commission's consideration. Staff is conditioning that the architectural stone feature on the, uh, sides of the building be modified to terminate at the eve line of the building in order to be more architecturally integrated. The applicant has provided conceptual renderings for the commission's consideration. The renderings depict signs, however, no sign details were provided with this application. A future application will be required to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an amended final development plan to approve these signs, meeting all code requirements. The applicant is required to continue to coordinate with the city of Columbus and the city of Dublin regarding, uh, fire, uh, sewer and water service to the site. With that, uh, staff is recommending approval of three minor text modifications, the final of which is to permit, um, LED lights where the data development text only permits, um, high-pressure sodium bulbs. And is recommending approval of the final development plan with five conditions. Uh, these are related to architecture, uh, signs, landscaping and, uh, fire and water service. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant team is here as well this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Martin, could you introduce the applicant team?
Sure. We have, uh, Chris Jolly with, uh, Darren Ranker Architects, um, as well as, um, a representative, uh, Ken Cook with all of our friends.
Thank you and welcome, gentlemen. Did you have a presentation that you wanted to share with us this evening or did you want to state and make a statement prior to our questions?
Sure, yeah, um, just wanted to state, um, appreciate your time here this evening. Uh, this facility, they're looking to make a more of a permanent home here currently. Uh, all our friends, they are in a rented facility here in Dublin. Uh, this will give them more of a, a permanent location, a facility that's more suited to their needs. They're um, excited about this, uh, prospect here constructing this site. Uh, regarding the, uh, text amendment items, we would be supportive of, uh, removing the mound as it would, what as Nikki stated, impact the existing trees there. Uh, the roof pitch request, um, you know, if we were to increase the roof pitch there to 612, it would start to, uh, pull up our central, um, clear story windows there that is, uh, open to a central space there. It's not a second story. And that would raise that height, which would then raise the height of the upper roof. And we start to exceed the, um, permitted overall building height. And it also would start to throw out the proportions of that interior space and would become a little too much of like a chasm space almost. And, uh, if there are any questions specifically on the, uh, use and Ken here, he could answer those, but generally speaking, there are, um, vans that they operate, that they pick up their participants in, in the mornings. Virtually none of them drive themselves, so they'll all be reliant upon their vans that they do operate and own themselves to bring them to and from the site and, uh, to go on the occasional, um, outings to different facilities.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Cook. Did you have a statement?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And thank you both for joining us with us this evening. At this time, I'd like to open, um, the floor up for questions from the commission to either staff or the applicant. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you. Uh, why the request to the change from, uh, 612 to 512?
Do you want to re-speak to that?
Sure, yeah, that's a, a function of, um, you know, the size of the building and having, uh, the central space there with a clear story window. So if we go to a 612 pitch, it starts to bring that, uh, clear story volume up higher. And then the upper roof then also would be at a steeper pitch, which would bring that height up as well. And so the overall height of the building, um, would exceed the allowable, I believe it's 35 feet. And then also the volume that that clear story opens up into um, would start to get out of scale, um, you know, from a human perspective, being in that space and it would be kind of, you just feel like a tiny little speck in a large plane there in the interior.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes, did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Ms. Fox?
I have a question. You mentioned that most of the people that come do not drive themselves. Do you have anybody in wheelchairs?
Yes, we do.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because your entranceway doorways are only three foot wide. And, um, you know, knowing that I have, um, I have, uh, family that are in wheelchairs myself, and so I, I understand that you really like to have entranceways that at least allow a double door opening or a little bit more space. And I think three foot, that, that concerns me that you have two. Well, the entryway in general is something I want to talk about, but that the doorway is only three foot wide just doesn't really accommodate disabled, uh, clients. To me, it doesn't. I think it's really awkward. You can't get two people through the door at the same time if you need to. Um, so that was my question. And then Nikki, um,
So Jane, Jane, did you want to pause and, and?
Sure.
Either Mr. Cook, um, or is it Mr. Dennis? Your, your name is showing as Mr. Dennis, but I thought Nikki introduced you differently.
Yeah, it's Chris Jolly. Yeah, uh, for some reason here on my work computer, I'm not sure why I pulled up another colleague's name there.
Got it. So did you want to speak to, uh, the, the width of the entryways in, in relation to uh, the needs of your clients?
Yeah, so the entry door is three feet, um, which is, um, you know, 32 inches clear is the minimum for accessibility. So we be providing, um, essentially a 36-inch opening, but we also do have um, an operable, essentially like an operable side light adjacent to that main door that can be opened up. So you could have, um, I think it's an 18-inch side light, so, um, you know, about a four and a half foot wide opening can be provided.
Well, that, that helps a little bit. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. And then I had one other question for, for, um, uh, staff. Um, is there a transparency requirement, uh, for the front facade?
There is no requirement. The development text was established in 1996.
Okay.
Those items weren't contemplated at the time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Way?
Yeah, I had a similar line of questioning to Ms. Fox about the circulation at the entrance. Um, you have the two columns that come down and support the roof. One is they're very, very close to the curb. And if you have vans coming in there and, you know, it's just a concern that they, that's an opportunity for those to be damaged. I know there's wheel stops, but you know, that doesn't always solve the problem, especially with vans. And then getting around those posts, is there adequate circulation room for wheelchairs and people? It just looks like it's very constrained when you have a population that you need a lot of space to kind of maneuver in and out.
Okay, well, let me cover that by saying that, uh, you know, the entryways that we've got in Dublin are at least as large or larger than other facilities that we use. When we bring people in with wheelchairs, it cannot operate those wheelchairs on their own. We have one person holding the door, another person wheeling them in through the door. And, uh, in most cases, the vans are going to park in the parking lot and then, uh, everybody's going to exit the van and enter into the building. So it would only be on days where there were, uh, say, heavy rains or something that we would pull the vans right up to the portico there and allow people in through that passageway. But even that being the case, the vans that carry the wheelchairs either exit to the side or the back of the van. And so enough space has to be put in the parking lot, even with the rain, in which case we use umbrellas, uh, to cover them as they come out. Uh, so that you're not really getting close enough to those pillars that it should be a concern.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for either staff or the applicant? Other questions for either staff or the applicant at this time? Mr. Supalak?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna run at the entryway, but I'm posing a different question. Tell me about your floor plan. I'm trying to discern if, of these two, how about this? My approach to the entryway is a little bit confused relative to sort of natural hierarchy, right, of architecture. And it's in part because you have two sort of equal entries. Help us understand what's going on inside the building. Is there one that is primary?
So they have, essentially, they have two teams. They call them the blue team and the green team. And it's based upon the needs of the individuals. So primarily, one group will enter on one set of doors and another group will enter through the other set of doors to get into their primary spaces within the building. There are obviously shared spaces in the building, but they have primary rooms, although they kind of split off.
Got it. So they are essentially two equal entries?
More or less, yeah. There's less individuals in one group than the other, but.
Sure, sure, okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Any other questions at this time? Mr. Fishman?
And I might not have calculated right, but it seems like there's a lot of blacktop in front of the building for the amount of parking they have. I know in previous buildings in this, in this same area, there's, there are tree wells in the parking lot to break it up. Is that possible? Or why is there a need for such huge masses of blacktop?
Well, I'll let Chris speak to that, but that was basically a requirement of the fire department for the clearance that we needed for the fire trucks to circulate through that area.
I see.
Correct, yeah, we don't need too many parking spaces here. You know, we almost could have gone away with a kind of a straight shot double-o corridor almost. But in order to provide turning space for a fire truck, that's essentially where the geometry comes from. It's a little bit more pavement than the fire truck needs because we're providing essentially around Central Island. So we have kind of that feature there in the middle. But it basically is controlled by the fire department turning radius and also just making sure we have a little bit more room for maneuverability of the vans as well.
Thank you. All right, any other communication with the applicant or with staff before we go into deliberations? Keeping in mind that the two items that we're asked to act on tonight are the minor text modification and the final development plan. All right, scene one, thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll move on to deliberations. Counsel, excuse me, Commission, Mr. Supalak, you want to start us off?
Sure, I thought I was gonna jump in here on about the hierarchy on the front door, but then, of course, you averted that whole commentary relative to having two equal entries. I think there's, in the architecture, we're just staying on the architecture for a moment. I think on the front elevation in particular, how about this, around the fenestration, you don't really have much in the way of accents, at least the way it reads. It might be there, you might have sort of brickwork and changes in the coursing that sort of articulate headers and sills. But short of, short of getting a good look at that, I might advocate for some of the precast stone sills and precast stone header there to help articulate those, that fenestration a little more fully. The parking lot is a large swath of blacktop. I see your truck, fire truck turning exhibit towards the back. I see that the circle in the middle does take a fair portion of it, but I think you could still, that could be a little bit, a little bit larger and/or, you know, sort of more of an oval shape to sort of downplay the even more of that blacktop, just to reduce that surface area. Aside from that, it's a complicated site. You guys are making good, good work of it. I don't know that I have a whole lot more. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I, I, I'm still on the parking lot. I wonder if that, maybe that big circle makes it look like this huge sea of blacktop. And we try to avoid that in Dublin. I wonder if that could be redesigned, maybe break that up into two circles, smaller or something, and still have the traffic patterns with the fire trucks. So, and as I said, you've explained the double entrance, and I don't think that's very attractive, the way that is with that wall and the two doors on your side and the pillars. But, but if you gotta do it, you gotta do it. I'd sure like to see something done with that parking lot because those seas of blacktop age and, 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 you know, they just, I think we do something more creative maybe and still get the fire trucks in.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Grimes?
Yeah, I think we're making pretty good use of the site. There is certainly a lot of land to the rear back there. And, you know, I'm in favor of the modifications to the text. I think the lighting change is good. I think the, dealing with the pound is like this is good. So I, I'm, overall, I, you know, I think it's, it's a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Schneer?
I'm fine as well. Actually, I think that the modification on the lighting is totally positive, the LED. You know, I share the, let's just say, concern with respect to the amount of blacktop there. But I don't have, I don't have a solution for it. If somebody does, I would probably be supportive of that.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Way?
Thanks, I support the first motion. I think everybody is pretty much saying that. I don't have any problem with the development plan other than I'm still not convinced that there's enough wheelchair clearance between the planting beds that are in front of the building and the, and the piers. And to the issue of the excessive paving, if you just pulled out, you know, made a wider sidewalk in front of the building or a paved area, that would reduce the amount of asphalt paving. I can't tell from the drawings in front of me, the actual dimensions, and the dimension building plan doesn't show the planters. So it's, I don't have the information to, but if you just look at the graphics and the rendering, it, it looks like you can't get through there with a wheelchair and you have to get to a handicapped space. That's the route. So that would be my, that's my only concern.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Fox?
You know, I agree. I think those kind of details are really important. I, I do believe that, that you need to increase the width of that. Can you tell me what the width of the sidewalk is at present?
I believe it's about eight feet.
Right, between the building and the column, how much space is there?
There should be about five to six feet.
And then between the column and the front of the planting bed on the sidewalk? If you had to get from the doorway behind the column, between the column and the planting bed to a parking space, how much space would there be?
Should at least be three feet. I gotta check on our.
Yeah, that's just not enough. Mr. Way is right. And I really think that you could extend that portico out a little bit and, and increase that sidewalk space. I mean, it's, you can get through it, but if the, if the plants overgrow or you have to get to the side of a wheelchair, you can't, you can't do it. There's just not enough space. So I, I think you need to modify that. I'm not crazy about two entrances. Because I don't think it makes a usable building in the future. It doesn't, but, but I won't stick on that. I do think that we've got to be really cognizant and open up these spaces for wheelchair users. A second thing that I would suggest is I believe that the other facades have more interest around the windows, as Mr. Supalak said. And it needs a little bit more architectural detailing, whether you use some, you know, cast stone lintels and sills, whether you do, it needs, it needs a little bit more dressing up on the facade, on the, on the front elevation. You do it a little bit, you do it on the back and on the sides, but I think the front elevation could, so for me, I think we have to add on the architectural elevations, some additional architectural detailing on the front facade. And then the only other comment that I had was, hold on just a minute. Oh, I wanted to inquire about the lighting on the front of the building. I noticed that there was a lighting fixture called out, but I don't know where you're placing it.
Yeah, there's a wall sconce adjacent to the side light on, at each door.
Okay. And then, okay.
And then there's also some can lights in the sofa of the, at the entry as well.
Okay, and then lighting along the back patio area as well? I mean, you only keep people, you only have people stay until what's? You don't, you close at six o'clock or seven o'clock or something like that?
The people are all out prior to three o'clock.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure you had some lighting on the, on the front facade, not knowing what your hours were. My only other suggestion, and it's a suggestion, is these open water retention ponds that we have, they, they're becoming what I just call water holes. And the community plan and I think our code requires that we have some sort of riparian barriers, some sort of plantings around these ponds to make them, one, healthier, and secondly, more attractive. So my recommendation would be to, in the landscaping plan, to add some additional riparian barrier and natural plantings around the edges of the pond. And those are my comments.
All right, looking back to the commission, other than the items that have been covered by staff, the two additional items that I heard for consideration of requirement, not including the recommendation that Ms. Fox just made with riparian barrier, are work with staff to ensure proper navigation for ingress and egress, taking into consideration increased accessibility requirements, and working with staff to incorporate additional architectural detail on the front elevation of the building. Did I miss anything else that was consensus among the commission? Mr. Fishman? You're muted.
Almost had a perfect record in this meeting. Anyway, we still talk about the sea of blacktop and, and, I've seen it in some other parking lots in Dublin where we, they put drivable brick to kind of guide people where they're going, that a fire truck can run right over. And, and that adds some interest to the parking lot rather than this big sea of blacktop. And, and I agree with Ms. Fox about the landscaping around the pond and also a fountain in that kind of setting would, would, I would suggest, that would, that would aerate the pond, make, keep it healthy and also aesthetically would look good.
We've already discussed and we're planning on putting a fountain in the pond.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. So, Mr. Hendershot, looking back to you, I don't know if you would be able to speak to the turnaround, the emergency turnaround requirements? Could you speak to what would be required?
Yeah, so there is a requirement by fire code that there needs to be a fire apparatus that can circulate through the site. They are able to do a turnaround. It doesn't have to be a continuous movement. So there was an auto turn exhibit shown that demonstrates the fire apparatus can turn around. So we could certainly work with the applicant to see if there's an opportunity to minimize the pavement but still meeting the turnaround requirements by the fire code.
Just so everybody knows too, we were actually trying as mu, as hard as we could to minimize the parking lot and that blacktop. And we only had to do the expansions because of the fire department's turning radius requirements.
Understood, and thank you for the clarity, Mr. Cook. So understanding with taking that into consideration, if we were to add, and applicant, I'll ask for feedback here in just a moment, but if we were to add, work with staff to ensure proper navigation for ingress and egress, taking into consideration increased accessibility requirements, working with staff to incorporate additional detail on the front elevation of the building, and working with staff to minimize the blacktop while still meeting fire department requirements for turnaround? Would that meet the requirements? Again, there were some other requests, but that, would that, those three items meet the requirements that the commission is looking for this evening? Seeing a couple of head nods.
Yeah. That's okay, yeah.
I'm not yet seeing four, I'm not yet seeing four head nods, so I'm looking for four.
I would.
So then, looking back to the applicant then, would those three additional considerations be considered? Understanding, of course, that you have worked with the fire department and so this second check of really, you know, are we sure we need all of that?
Yeah, we agree to that and we can revisit that to see what we can do to, you know, try to reduce some more pavement.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Martin? On final development plan, we have five conditions. I believe the commission is asking to amend that to include three additional. I have them typed up. I don't know if you would like me to kind of shoot them over to you?
That would be wonderful. I've been trying to type as fast as you talk, but it's not, it's not quite hitting the mark for me over here.
Understood.
Been pieces. I mean, I think you've been articulate enough that if you were in agreement with the first five conditions and wanted to vote to approve this with the three additional, eight total, I could receive those in writing subsequent to the meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right, so commission, looking to you, if you are comfortable, I will entertain two motions this evening on this application. The first one is a recommendation for approval of the text modifications. And the second one is final development plan. Before I entertain that motion, just validating, we have not during the course of the meeting received any additional public comment.
We have not received any additional public comment or none whatsoever.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So commission, looking to you.
Move on the first motion?
I have, I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
All right, looking, looking then to the second item. This is for the final development plan, recommending approval of the final development plan with a total of eight conditions, the five in the staff report and the three that we've added during discussion this evening.
To move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you again, Ms. Beal. Gentlemen, thank you for spending your evening with us this Thursday night. We certainly look forward to this amenity, having a permanent home in the City of Dublin.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you both. All right. Flip back over to agenda for this evening. So the last two items we're going to be hearing together. So this is the Towns at Parkway at PID's 273-008811 and 273-12991, 21-033 FTP and 21-034 FTP, Final Development Plan and Final Development Plot. I'll, I will read both cases four and five under the record together. I'll, I will read both cases four and five under the record together. This application is a request for the development of one hundred fifty-four attached, single-family residential units. With zero point seven acres of open space. And a request for the subdivision of eleven acres to establish four lots, three publics, public rights of way and associated easements. The site is owned Bridge Street District Sawmill Center Neighborhood and is northwest of the intersection of John Shields Parkway and Village Parkway. Ms. Mark, you have our presentation again, so welcome back. Not that we ever let you leave.
I was gonna say a long time no see. Okay, good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a final development plan. And review and a recommendation to city council on acceptance of a final plat. For towns on the parkway formerly referred to as Tuller Road Town Homes. So this site is located within the Bridge Street District. The Bridge Street District process was realigned in twenty nineteen. To more closely mimic the planned unit development process. The three required steps in the development process are concept plan, preliminary development plan and final development plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, has previously reviewed and approved, um, the first two applications. Additionally, the applicant pursued an optional informal review. Subsequent to the preliminary, uh, development plan approval. To obtain feedback regarding architecture, specifically the architectural details. Uh, proposed throughout the community. So the site in question is approximately eleven acres in size. And is located north of John Shields Parkway and west of Village Parkway, south of Tuller Road. The site is surrounded by existing development, including Tuller Flats to the west. Existing office buildings and hotels to the north. Dublin Village Center to the east and Greystone Muse Neighborhood to the south. The application proposes to establish four new blocks of development. Including the extension of McEwen Avenue and the creation of two new public streets, Seville Street and Holcombe Street. The development will be for a hundred and fifty-four attached, single-family townhomes. Which will be distributed across twenty-nine buildings, which range in size from three to eight units. A total of point seven acres of open space is provided in alignment with the code requirements. Open space is also proposed to be provided with this application as required by the Bridge Street District Code. The open spaces proposed are identified on the screen, a total of seven. Including three pocket plazas and four pocket parks. Staff is, um, recommending approval of the proposed open space plan. However, has noted, um, a deficiency of three thousand square feet, which the applicant has, um. Collaborated with us on revising, and therefore you will see, um, really just a clerical, uh, disapproval of a waiver. And also a condition that the revised open space plan, um, be submitted to staff. Additionally, landscape details have been provided for all of the open space areas. Most importantly, the gateway, which is identified as part of the neighborhood standards for the. Uh, Sawmill Center Neighborhood District in which this development is located. Additionally, treatments, uh, including benches, bike racks, pavers. And screening are also included with the final development plan. The applicant has provided a conceptual rendering of this gateway character at the intersection of John Shields and Village Parkway. As a key location, um, really bookending, uh, the John Shields. Streetscape. With the final development plan, in addition to the site-specific standards, the Planning and Zoning Commission is. Tasked with reviewing all, uh, requirements of the building type. Building types are generally based on use and form. The single-family attached building type is the building type for this development. Which establishes, uh, the site standards, which were largely, um. Conform to with the preliminary development plan. Some waivers and administrative departures were approved at that time, given the curvature of the surrounding street network. An additional waiver is required for block D. Due to the increased impervious lot coverage in that block. With the final development plan, all building and architectural standards are also required to be evaluated and met. And in cases where the prescriptive requirements of the code are not able to be met. Um, administrative departures or waivers are requested to be granted. In this case, um, waivers are requested, um, in. Certain instances to the required transparency and blank wall requirements, um, as well as. Um, the application of materials and roof pitches, uh, in select areas. The applicant with this final development plan has incorporated the Planning and Zoning Commission's feedback as well as staff's comments. Over the last, um, six plus months. And has established seven typical architectural unit types. The intent is that these unit types would be combined in, uh. Various, uh, groupings across the development to provide, um, architectural diversity. The Planning and Zoning Commission had requested that a traditional architectural character be pursued for this neighborhood. Which is reflected in the final designs. You'll see here that the, uh, designs are primarily clad in various. Um, brick as well as secondary, um, cementitious siding. Many of the unique architectural features of these buildings are proposed to be fabricated out of, uh, polyurethane. Um, the polyurethane allows for additional architectural detail as well as, um, resiliency and. Um, maintenance-free, um, conditions over time. Staff is recommending approval of a waiver to permit this material, although is, um, conditioning that. At the ground story, um, an alternate material be used in many cases. Um, that, uh, could be wood or another synthetic material, um, that is, um. Appropriate, uh, for the more tactile, uh, portions of the building. Finally, you'll see here some additional architectural features, um, that are not present on other elevations. The applicant has provided a series of typical side elevations. You'll note in the building diversity plan, the applicant has, um, standard side elevations, high impact side elevations. High impact, um. Rear elevations, and these vary based on the configuration and site. Uh, or floor plan layout of the unique units. A typical rear elevation is provided here. You'll note the, um, decorative garage doors as well as. Uh, balconies with a, you know, a variety of fenestration details. Additionally, at the gateway feature, which is required by the neighborhood standards, gateway architecture is, um. Proposed to be provided in alignment with the goals and objectives of the Bridge Street District Area Plan. These gateway elevations are the only two elevations, um, that follow this detail. Um, and will be programmed in that location. These elevations, unlike many others, um, are not permitted to, um, contain rooftop balconies. The intent here is to have a closed, um, full roof line. Um, and to accent the open space. Five, uh, material color schemes have been provided. They're shown here and are intended to be combined. Um, based on the architectural features of each unit type. A detailed building variety plan is provided. Um, the applicant has put a significant amount of thought into identifying high-impact elevations as well as. Um, the diversity of units based on total number of units in each building, as well as adjacency to other buildings. Staff is conditioning that the applicant continue to work with us to ensure that. Um, not only do bill, do units vary unit to unit, but the combination of units. Um, vary as well as the color palettes vary building to building. So the, um, the appearance. Of diversity is conveyed across the community. A number of architectural character renderings have also been provided for the commission's review. Uh, this is the proposed character along Village Parkway, which is the eastern side of the site. John Shields Parkway, uh, which is a principal frontage street traversing the Bridge Street District. And McEwen Avenue, which is a public right-of-way, um, although is internal to the development. And provides access to the larger green, um, open space. Recommendation of acceptance for a final plat to city council is also. Um, been submitted for the commission's review. Uh, staff is, um, recommending approval with conditions. Or parcels are to be established as well as access easements and dedication of three public rights. With that, um, staff is recommending approval of a final development plan and final plat. Additionally, approval of four administrative departures is recommended. Approval of ten waivers is recommended, disapproval of two waivers is recommended. Um, and the final development plan is accompanied by sixteen conditions. And the final plat is accompanied by four conditions. With that, the applicant team is here this evening. They are represented by Erin Underhill. Um, as well as Matt Callahan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, and welcome back, Mr. Underhill and Mr. Callahan. Nice to see you this evening and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Did you have a statement or a presentation you would like to make?
Yes, we do. Um, thank you, Ms. Call. I appreciate the opportunity with us tonight as well as, uh, probably our star player, uh, Keith Filipkowski, our architect. And I'll be turning this over to him for the bulk of our presentation. Um, wanted to just kind of reiterate, uh, the history here of the project and, um. You know, it was interesting. I went back and looked at the Bridge Street Code and all of the steps in the process and. One of the things that the code says is the intent is to provide for an efficient and predictable review process for rezoning and development plan applications. Uh, largely, I think, um, uh, we have efficiently taken the feedback, put it into play. Uh, the unpredictable part is typically, uh, architecture, right? Uh, it's a little bit in the eye of the beholder. So, um, we have, I think, established pretty early on in this process with the commission that the site plan was largely supported and, um. You know, throughout a four, what is now about a fourteen-month process in terms of across, this is our fourth meeting with the commission. Uh, we have really earnestly, and, and this mostly falls on Keith. Uh, tried to incorporate all of the comments we've received to the best of our ability. And we think we've done a really good job with that and, and tonight, uh, we assume this will be topic A. Um, architecture is in fact an art form, and I've said that before in previous meetings. Uh, I would say, you know, if you tell three artists what you want painted, you're probably going to get three different, uh. Depictions of that, uh, from each of them. And it's because, uh, you tell somebody something. Uh, and what you want to see on a piece of paper or on a painting or a drawing. And, um, you can only take those words so far and everybody's going to interpret them differently. One artist might, uh, paint a scene in a certain way and another, in another way, same with architecture and, um. We have sort of the reverse thing here where we have one artist, which is Keith, listening to a bunch of different, uh. Commissioners and staff members who are trying to convey what they would like to see. Uh, come out of the ground and, and on the plans and paper and, um, that's often a, uh, tight rope that is hard to walk. So. Uh, you know, we have tried to take all the pushing and pulling that comes along with this process. Uh, put it into play with, um, what is a very long and exhaustive, um, objective set of standards in the code. And, uh, tried to kind of move the Rubik's Cube around, if you will, and, and try to get it all to line up with the right colors at the end here. And we hope that we've done that for you this evening. You know, Casto has owned this property for some time. I remember, um, I was involved in the Tuller Flats project. Uh, and, um, there was a lot of discussion back then, six, seven, eight years ago, about what would happen on this piece. Casto has realized that more apartments are not what was desired. Um, they, in fact, we brought a senior living user. Uh, that really didn't get very far with the city and, um, uh, and so that was kind of strike two. And I believe Pulte is really in the unique position to bring the community what it needs and a very. Unique product for this side of Bridge Street and we, we believe it will fit well with the fabric of the, the community at large. So. Um, here again, we're, we're at a place where we're essentially equating this to a fourth iteration of the design. Um, we believe that as Nikki showed throughout her presentation, that there has been a distinct and deliberate evolution over time here. And, um, you know, I'm sure that in some people's minds, we maybe haven't gotten it all the way there, but I think we've gotten it most of the way there. And that'll probably be dependent upon each commissioner's individual, uh, likes and dislikes, but. Overall, we believe we're presenting a product that the community will be proud of and Pulte will be very successful with. Before I turn it over to Keith, I did want to say one other thing. Um, when we started this process, I went back and looked at the meeting minutes and made sure that. My facts were correct, but the, uh, price point we had anticipated on average here when we started was about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, mid-three hundreds on average. With, uh, the way the market is today, with, uh, materials prices and primarily because of the changes that have been made due to the, our reaction to the board's. Uh, and commission's comments, uh, we believe these price points are going to be starting in the low fours. And extending into the high fours and maybe, uh, with some fives in front of some of those numbers. So. This product has not only evolved in terms of design, but also in terms of the price of the product a- as an end result. So. Um, I will say in closing with my remarks that, uh, we agree with the staff report in nearly all respects. Uh, we even, as Nikki touched on, we are even okay with the disapprovals. We think we've. Or those recommendations of disapprovals to a couple of the waivers, we believe we are able to address and have addressed those things. Uh, uh, in a way that complies with code. The two points that we would like to discuss this evening are two final development plan conditions, one being number three relating to the. Use of polyurethane trim. Um, I'd like Keith to explain why that's important for us to be able to use across all points on the elevations of these buildings. And then secondly is item number five, which is the roof terraces should be prohibited from locations at end units of buildings. Uh, we partially agree with that, but we would like the ability on those end units to do, uh, terraces on the rear elevations. Which are less impactful, and so that would be a discussion point, uh, this evening as well. So. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Keith and have him sort of walk you through what he's done to, uh, in response to the comments we received when we last presented. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Filipkowski.
Hello, uh, thank you. Uh, thanks Nikki for your opening presentation and Erin, um, for your, uh, for your comments as well. Um, as has been mentioned, you know, the last time we met, uh, there was, I think, general agreement or support from the board. Uh, in terms of the architectural style being traditional, um, so that hasn't changed, obviously. Uh, what we've continued to try and do is narrow in on the specific feedback that we've gotten from each board member to the best of our ability. Um, so more specifically focusing on, you know, the front porch, uh, entryways in terms of ensuring their usability. Um, ensuring the size and proportion of those are proper, um, and the overall character of them, including areas surrounding those porches such as. Insetting of the front doors in certain scenarios that came back, came this feedback from. in certain scenarios that came back, came as feedback from certain members. So one thing I want to be very clear about with the porch progressions that we've made as it relates to the recommendations in the staff report, is that we comply to the code in terms of the depth of those porches. And so I just want to make sure that the group knows that we do intend to do that. So for any of the full-covered porches, we would intend to have a six-foot clear space, and that'll certainly provide usability for people to put chairs out and use the porches as the board intends them to be. You know, we've continued to articulate now what the rooftop terraces conditions look like, both front and rear, as well as how that is incorporated with the interrupted roof ridge lines. More specifically, what we proposed in our package is that in the instance where we provide the front-sided rooftop terraces, that that is done in the unit elevations that have the raised roof, and that will allow us to in the envelope of the existing roof condition. We can speak more about the rooftop terraces in just a moment when we speak to line item number five with the recommendations that Erin brought up. But just to go on more about the specific improvements that we've done to the architecture as a result of the feedback of last meeting, we've also worked on the appearance of the side elevations and rear in terms of both the typical and high-impact, including significantly more masonry, introduction of some specialty masonry details, such as herringbone patterns. And then, of course, an elevated sense of architecture for the gateway, southeast corner gateway that Nikki had flashed a picture of as well in the presentation. So in the end, as Erin said, we're very proud of this architecture. We feel like we've spoken that all of the comments that have come along the way to the best of our ability, and we hope that you guys see it the same way. You know, with respect to the polyurethane trim, that is one item that does give us some pause in that we feel that the finer details, such as these trim elements that we're seeing on the front entryways, it's very important for us to use the product that we have proposed because we don't feel necessarily it's going to have the same impact if we use it out of a different material and it's field-crafted out of wood or some other material. Upon my research, I haven't found another company that offers a solution that's pre-made, manufactured, to ensure the quality that we both, I think, want. So we're obviously open to any kind of recommendation you guys have there, but for the time being, our request is that the recommendation associated with that polyurethane trim is to be allowable on the ground level. And then in terms of the end-unit rooftop terraces, I mentioned earlier that we have self-imposed a rule set that we're going to, the idea is that we'll offer the option for the rooftop terrace on the front of the building, on the raised roof units, and on the rear, make them available for any one of the units, including the end units. You know, our buyers typically, the premium unit within any given building string is going to be the end unit. So that is where we feel like we need to make sure we can still create an impression also with activating the street and the public in terms of viewing capability, both from the unit owners, as well as people down on the street level. So those two items, or any of the comments I've had, I'm open to any questions anybody has about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Filipkowski. All right, looking to the commission for questions at this point in time, we will pause and hold our discussion until after questions and discussion with applicant staff are closed.
Maybe it's a question about, and maybe I just heard it, Keith, how you just described those balconies. Are these units, how is this site actually going to get built and/or sold? Are you waiting for buyers to make selections about which unit? I'm not, not which unit, location-wise, but which elevation, some of the details, i.e. the balcony, are they making those choices? Or are you building the complex and then selling the units?
Well, the idea is that the building strings as a whole will be identified upfront, although we're still working, as Nikki mentioned, to ensure that the building variety is mutually agreeable. That should still be pre-planned in the sense that we can set the expectation about what the overall building string is going to be. But then within that, we'll offer a variety of structural options associated with the building, mostly internal. But of course, in terms of a rooftop terrace, that would be an option that would be at the buyer's choosing. So ideally, we have an entire building string sold and with completed sales before we start a building. But the reality is, we may not have that. And so the trigger for when we start could be 50% sold occupancy or not. But that's the strategy, generally speaking.
Got it. And then relative to everything we're looking at, what will the buyers have, what options will they have at their discretion? I heard the exterior-wise, right? I heard the roof terrace, they'll have some choice on that. Are there other elements exterior that they'll have say on?
No, not from an exterior perspective. Everything else would be interior in terms of luxury bathroom options, guest suites, things of that sort.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Superlack. Ms. Fox?
Okay. So to that question, I guess I'm a little confused. Let's say you have a building, you have six units, a building that has six units, and every one of them wants a rooftop terrace. Will you say yes to that on the front?
No, because we're only going to, in all cases, we'll opt, well, on the front elevation, we will only offer the option of rooftop terrace on the raised roof height units.
Okay, so that might be two or three. If it's a six, you may have three of those across the front. You may allow three, okay. And then on the rear, same thing, would have to be a raised unit building.
On the rear, we want to offer the rooftop terrace on any one of the units. But you cannot have a rooftop terrace on both the front and rear of the same unit.
Okay, right. So to me, my impression is, by the way, I want to compliment you for hearing so many of the comments that we made, and was really pleased to open this package and see all the changes that you made, and I thought there were some very, very good ones, many good ones, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that compliment.
And you deserve it. So to me, the rooftop terraces, that number along the front facade will change the look of this substantially. I don't, I have to think about the rear because it's not public space. But I'm, as you know, I'm the rah-rah, activate-the-street woman, so I certainly am giving it good consideration. The second question I have for you is the polyurethane trim. Are you using a particular brand? I had inquired with an architect about this, and I would love to have some professional opinion about this, is that it is the kind of trim that doesn't take impact well if you have it at ground level, but certainly is a credible material at the upper levels where there isn't going to be much bumping and knocking against it. What particular trim are you planning on using? And does it have a warranty? And what is its durability?
Well, we plan to use Fipon. It's a well-known product, and I mean, the durability of it is fantastic, quite frankly, and both in terms of its durability and in terms of its sustainability with look, right? In terms of maintenance. So we're very comfortable with the product. We use it across much of our architecture in a typical single-family application or otherwise, townhomes alike.
Okay. I don't know if staff has a comment on that, but that would be my question. Okay.
Staff, do you have a response? Is this a typical product that we would see used? If so, do we have differentiation whether we use it at ground level or only at upper levels? Can you speak to that historically?
Yeah, so there is precedent for this type of product being requested in the Bridge Street District. Previously, it was not approved. I think there is merit, given this type of architecture. It is far more detailed than some of the modern streamlined forms that are elsewhere in the district, which I believe is what the applicant is getting at. Staff was recommending approval of this synthetic material being permitted on the upper stories, although had recommended that wood or an alternate synthetic material be on the ground stories. In my conversations with the applicant, I understand that potentially some of the architectural detailing may need to be simplified at the ground story in order to produce it out of a natural material. So from a historic standpoint, we've not approved this material in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. All right, looking back to the commission, Mr. Schneer.
Just a question for clarification. The balconies, I guess you call it a box bay, and the Juliet balcony, those are ornamental only. I see, for example, Juliet balcony has doors, but it looks like the depth wouldn't accommodate anyone actually using it. Is that accurate, or am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, well, the Juliet balcony projects itself 12 inches. The code allows for it to project up to 24 inches. And the other finite detail surrounding the size of the Juliet balconies is that it is not to extend six inches past the fenestration, of which we just provided dimension in our package, so we'll ensure that we're compliant with that.
Thank you.
All right, looking to the rest of the commission, any other questions at this time? Mr. Fishman? You're muted.
I'm getting tired. Anyway, I'm concerned about quality materials, but I'd like to, first of all, a little history. This is obviously a condominium project with an HOA that were responsible for maintenance of the buildings, I assume, right? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so now, the polyurethane bothers me. We did turn it down before. And what kind of tests does it have for longevity? I know that I see polyurethane fences that are faded, warped, broken, bent, and so on. That used to be the miracle fence was the, I've used them and since then replaced them. So do we have any history on this polyurethane trim?
Well, I would say Fipon is a proven industry material that's superior, right? And I mean, the idea of associating a long plank like a fence, a polyurethane material is different when you think about the geometry of compact corbels and dentals, and that it doesn't allow for edging and warpage as readily. You know, I also want to remind too, just aside from the product, that you'll find that Pulte Homes has one of the best warranties in the industry in terms of really everything we cover. And we've got a one-year parts workmanship material warranty, two-year mechanical plumbing, five-year water infiltration, 10-year structural. So we have a very good warranty. We stand behind our products, and as does Fipon. Whereas if you were doing a field-built trim that's not being maintained by being painted or otherwise, it very much has the ability to rot, which Fipon wouldn't, and certainly doesn't look as nice as the paint starts to peel, and then it would start to warp and twist as water intrudes on that material.
Is there any way where we could go and see this polyurethane? You say you used them on single-family houses, it's like 10 years old, or has some age on it?
I'm sure there are examples we could pull, for sure. And if not on a Pulte home, we could, we certainly drive around town, and we could pull any number of examples of older homes to see the material.
As I looked at all this material, I thought, this is a pretty big project in Bridge Park. And it would certainly set the character as it ages. And I think quality materials are going to be very, very important in a project this size, right in this, as you said, so prominent in Bridge Park. So I'm real concerned about, as I said, polyester, I don't know anything about it. Mr. Superlack might, as an architect, if he's used it or whatever, but I'd sure like to see it used the way you're using it, where it's aged, 10 years old or so. How long, do you know how long the product's been around?
The inception of Fipon, no, I'm not sure of that answer. But just to remind, I mean, the baseline for our concern is the very same as you just stated. We feel that the best quality material to use is the Fipon, otherwise we wouldn't be suggesting it. It's for no other reason than that that we've got this pause.
Okay. As I said, I'd like to see it aged, and, you know, and as I said, I know nothing about it. I don't know if anybody on our board does, or you do even. Have you seen it where it's 10 years old? I know that I built my first building in 1973, aluminum siding, and the guy said to me, "You'll never live long enough to see this stuff go bad." Well, I certainly lived long enough. The same thing with vinyl siding. And so that's why I'm skeptical. I think this is a very important project. And we're using slim brick and stuff like that. I'm concerned about longevity and the quality.
Well, actually, just as a matter of correction, wanted to point out that we've actually proposed real brick at this point for the project.
Okay, I thought I saw it in the thing, but okay, it's great. But as I said, yeah, I think quality and longevity is important to me. And as I said, we've seen many other products come down the road that haven't met that promise. We thought they would, and they haven't.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Fox?
Yes, Keith, I want to ask you, you know, I may very well have experience with this product. Is Fipon the sort of solid synthetic that you can buy, like at most lumber and Home Depot stores and things like that? You can, it's like a synthetic, it's white, synthetic, it looks like wood, it has a wood grain on one side, it's smooth on the other. Is that pretty much?
No. No, I think you're referencing more of like an MDF composite material that's something that's probably not as durable. I would also say that often is the case for the typical retail buyer going to a big-box store such as Home Depot, that you're not going to find the same articulation of moldings that you would, in the sense that they have a full-on catalog that the typical buyer is not going to purchase. So these are specialty details that we're using in accordance with the traditional architecture we set out to serve. And so if I'm, so that's my answer. I don't think it's the same thing we're talking about.
Well, the only reason I say that is because Mr. Fishman is concerned about durability. And I've had experience where I had wood molding around lower windows that rotted two or three times, replaced them with wood two or three times. I purchased this synthetic product. I don't know that it was this particular one, but I can tell you that it has, it looks just like the original. It has resisted all water damage. It has managed to maintain itself during both hot and cold temperatures. And, you know, I am not opposed, especially if you have to change your architectural details to simplify it. I think that this is something that I would say, as long as staff feels comfortable with, that they feel as if the product will meet the durability standards that we require and the aesthetic standards, that it certainly has, I think, a place for, especially with the detailing that you're doing. I've had good experience with a product similar, I guess I would say. So, and it's been probably up 10 years, and it looks as good as the day we put it on.
So I do just want to level set, we are still in the questioning part of the discussion this evening, so I want to make sure that we're not getting in front of ourselves and making swinging statements as we're still in fact-finding mode, so.
Thank you, Rebecca. I hate that every now and then. Get that rope out, girl. Get that rope out, girl.
So looking back to the commission for questions for staff and for the applicant, Mr. Supalack.
Looking for clarification, I see, Erin, I heard you say you have no trouble with the sort of, I don't know, there's one of the, one of the criteria or waivers is about 30,000 square feet of open space to 27. But I see on the plans that you guys have 27,000, or I'm sorry, you have the bigger, the 30,000. So I'm, I'm looking for clarification, be it from Erin, maybe from you or from staff. Where are we at with that?
Yeah, my understanding, I, I will have someone from our team, Greg Chilog, with the Edge Group is on as well. I believe we have, I'm not sure whether we've addressed it in our actual submittal here. We may have, but I know that we have convinced ourselves that we will meet it one way or the other. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, Erin, that's correct. I've had some contact with Nikki this past week. And what we basically determined is it's kind of a, a technical accounting issue at this point, where some of our boundaries that we had drawn on the submittal had to be revised and we had to adjust some of the other boundaries to make up that deficiency. So at the time when the, the report was written, we would have been deficient based on an inaccurate boundary. And in that time since, we've worked with staff to remedy on how we would make that deficiency up.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Way?
Yeah, seeing we're on landscape, let's stick with that for just a second. So I'm looking at the C1 Pocket Park. And there's this low kind of wall, curvilinear wall that's shown on the plans, but it's no reference to what the material is. I looked all through here, I can't see that. Looking for some input on that.
You're, you're talking on sheet L4.2?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is actually just a curb, a curb detail.
What's it made of?
It would probably be concrete.
And not granite?
No.
To match the other, to match the planters on.
Concrete or precast concrete.
Okay, it's, it's not referenced in your coded notes, so I wanted to flag that. And then the second question I has, which, which was raised by staff, I'm, I'm trying to understand this wood fence that ties the two buildings together. What's?
Now, just, just for clarity, Mr. Way, staff, is that the same seven-foot wood fence that is recommended disapproval?
That's correct.
So it sounds like staff has recommended disapproval and the applicant has agreed to that. So seeing that as the case, do you still want to speak to it?
I just want to ask the question, does that mean it goes away?
Correct.
Yeah. I support that, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? All right. So closing up the question and answer and moving on to the deliberation and the commission discussion. So Ms. Fox, you, you started off, so why don't you continue on with discussion on the, the couple of items before us this evening? And we'll just go from there.
All right. Once again, compliments really have moved this to a level that I think that you will find to be, that we will all find to be timeless and very attractive. And I appreciate that, that you heard a lot of our comments. Let's see. I, I think that I, if staff is comfortable with a polyurethane trim and it would allow you to maintain the, the architectural details that you're striving for, I think that that would be, and I don't know that we necessarily have to say we're starting, we're starting a precedence, but I, but I do think there are some materials out there that we probably could open our minds to a little bit. So I, I would not necessarily be opposed to it as long as staff felt comfortable with it. I am not in favor of giving choices for front roof terraces. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how I feel about the front roof terrace. I don't have that much of a problem with them along the backside. But because we're, we've been so careful about creating this variety of images, I'm worried that these front roof terraces will become the focal point instead of the beautiful architecture that you've drawn. So, so I would like to hear what the other commissioners think about that. Along the back detail of the, of the buildings, the, the balconies and the garage doors read all the same to me. And, and I think it does you a little bit of a disservice. And I'm wondering if you could vary the garage door style a little bit and maybe vary the railing materials a little bit to be a little bit more custom for the particular condo. And I think that it would help get rid of that because it's at street level and people aren't going to go up, go really look up and see the differentiation of each building, but they're just going to read the same garage door at the street level. So if you could vary that and maybe the materials on the railing, I don't think it would cost you anything. I think it would just be a variation of material and I think it would help. The Juliet balconies, I drove through Bridge Street today to look at the site again. And what I noticed was that every, I wouldn't say every, that's a generalization. Many, many, many balconies, even the smallest ones, had chairs on them. Everybody sits on them. They're just, it's popular. If I would be willing to give a modification and allow those Juliet balconies to be three foot deep so that you actually could sew a little chair out there and have a cup of coffee, I think it would really activate the street and, you know, give you a little bit more interest. Let's see. The, the Pocket Park at the gateway, C1 or that one, I believe that that's a really significant corner. And I would like to hear from the others. I would like to see that become a little bit more interestingly designed and landscaped because I do think it, it, it's a piece of artwork, it could use a fountain, it could use something that said, this is the entrance to the neighborhood. After I drove through Bridge Park, looking at this particular lot, I drove into Greystone Muse next door. And I noticed that their entrances were designed even, you know, more comprehensively, more distinctively. And I, I don't, I think that this piece needs a little bit more work. And then the only other suggestion, and I think it was called out by staff, some of the elevations tend to look the same. And I do think it's important that, like for instance, elevation three and five look the same, six and three look the same. They're just kind of a changing in materials. I, I really think it's important that staff works with you to make sure that you have good variation between, from one building to another, even if it meant that you had one more style. But I, but I wouldn't require that. So I think that is my, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Fishman, would you like to go next?
I, I assume that, that this project will have a well-funded HOA. So I, I'm starting to get sold on the polyurethane. If, if it goes bad, the, the HOA, that'll be their responsibility. So to make it look good. And I, you follow all the new federal guidelines and so on for reserves and all that stuff. I, I, I think it, it, it won't be a problem. I also do appreciate going through this today, that you did listen to us. And I, I really do appreciate that. And, and so, and I, I misunderstood. I thought, I'm looking at that, that was slim brick and I'm happy to hear you're using full brick. I think that's, that you can tell the difference. And I, I think that screams quality, so I'm happy about that. I also agree with Ms. Fox. I, I would love to see the balconies on the back and not the front because, and, and the Juliet balconies be usable. Because as I said, I too went through there and, and Ms. Fox is certainly right. There, those balconies are used in Greystone Manor. And, and there's chairs and lounges and all kinds of stuff on them. And so I, I, I think that, that, I appreciate that. And other than that, I think you made a great effort. And, and so I think we're on the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Supalack?
This has come a long way. This is really, Keith, everybody, this is really rich, detailed architecture. I, I give you guys a lot of credit and that, you know, I mean, it's not an easy undertaking given the array of styles you guys are tackling. I, I think it's captured, I'm just going to repeat it. I think, I think staff is all tuned into it. I think you guys are all tuned into it. I'm just going to repeat it. You've done a good job providing variety. And now that for variety, if it's evenly spread, it becomes again homogeneous in a different way. So I think that sensitivity about are we sort of, you know what I mean? At some point, two, two of the same units somehow have to end up next to each other. So it kind of feels a little more random. I'm not advocating for that, but you know, you, that, that whole commentary I think is real. And that's the danger at this point. So as you just continue fine tuning it, you know, I mean, have some sensitivity there. FIPON, I could be convinced. It's been a while since, since I've used it in particular. I, I could be convinced of using it on the lower levels. Wood certainly has its own problems and it doesn't get detailed. It, it, simply put, it does not get detailed nearly as lovely as, you know, I mean, a, a FIPON that can get basically is poured in a mold and, you know, I mean, the synthetic material poured in a mold. And I could be convinced that might be samples, that might be examples, that might be. I, I don't know if it's going so far as a, a small mock at some point. But, but maybe we build that in here in order to fully, you know, get this commission to fully commit. I agree with Jane on art or focal points. You guys are, I mean, this is a bang-up community. Don't, don't gloss over the opportunity to, to put a nice piece of focal, focal element or art in those, in the, some of those pocket parts, mainly the gateway, but also the one on the, what is it? The south, excuse me, south, southeast, or southwest corner, excuse me. Variation on the garage, you know, I agree with, I agree with Jane. There's opportunities, even if it's, you know, all pulling from the Clopay, the Clopay catalog. You can go, you know, six different designs really easy in there. And I'm not advocating for six, but there's opportunity to make some variation. I know you have, you know, I mean, eight, eight different front door colors. Could be color, could be the design of the door, could also be the rail that's on the top of, top of that balcony that's there that starts to help that backside just have some of the variation that the front side has and doesn't sell, sell it short. I really appreciate, I was a big proponent of this, Keith. I really appreciate your high-impact ends and the sort of box bays and even right the gateway and the, the herringbone details in there. I actually think you could, you could, you guys could do a few more. I'm calling out in particular right around the, the major park that's on the west side and buildings. I'm just going to rattle through this. Take or leave this, this is, this is, this one in particular won't be conditional. I'm just offering it to you. Building 16, 14, 15, and 16, there's ends there that I think they're so, in such proximity to the park that they're going to have a lot of foot traffic to and from that area that maybe you just go ahead and bite the bullet and make, make some of those ends of those buildings also sort of premium with a sort of box bay bump out type of thing. Food for thought. Aside from that, this is, this has become a lovely project. I give you lots of credit for putting up with us and navigating through, through all this with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you. Tremendous progress. I'm really appreciative of the responsiveness you had, the thoughtfulness for the development of this project. I think as far as the polyurethane is concerned, I think maybe it's time to try it. I think it's come a long way. And maybe that's what you need to differentiate this development further from maybe the other choices people have. I like the idea of a three-foot Juliet balcony, that would be nice. I am fine with front or back terraces. Might be interesting to see how many people will want one or the other or neither. That might be a, an interesting aspect of, of this development. And I just appreciate, it's obvious from the number of waivers and line items in this that the staff has worked really hard, as well as you have, to, to be responsive to what the commissioner said in the past. And I, I, I thank you for putting this beautiful project in front of us. And, and I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it happen. I, I, I don't, I don't know that limiting it on the, the terraces on the end units would be helpful, but maybe, you know, I don't know whether people would. If I did not want a terrace, would I want an end unit? I don't know the answer to that question, but again, that's back to, it'll be interesting to see who chooses what when these things go for sale. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Schneer?
It's a great, I think it's a great project. This iterative process has yielded a, a, a really fantastic result. I echo my fellow commissioners on, on just a couple of comments. The ornamentation, I, I do think having the Juliet balconies be functional would be, would be great. And to be consistent with wanting people to be outside, even though we don't want over the abundance of uniformity, I think it, it, to be consistent with being outdoors, I think the front and rear terraces are actually a plus. And I'm okay on the polyurethane as well. So have at it and take our comments, take my comments if you would like them. But I, I think the project with the staff's input is, is an excellent result.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Fishman?
Pretty much ditto.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Way?
Thanks. Obviously, this is my first shot at this, so I can't speak about all the great advancement other than my favorite cornfield finally gets developed. I'm excited about that. This, this is really an incredible project and it's going to be a real great addition to this area. I'm amazed at the amount of investment that's being made into the look and feel of this development. It's quite spectacular. My only real comment would be again, the gateway corner. I, I don't think it's screaming gateway right now and, and could very well use some additional elements to really make that a great place. And I, I just want to highlight that I don't think a concrete seat wall through there really fits in. The planters along the street are out of granite. I think the, if that's a feature, it should be made out of stone. And then again, just with all the other elements, really start to really speak to that being a gateway. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Way. I do want to get some clarity here. So we did have the two items that the applicant brought up in the beginning were the use of the polyurethane trim, which I believe that we, we did a pretty extensive discussion on in our comments. The other one was the rooftop terraces prohibited from the end units. So a couple of people spoke to this, but commission, looking back to you, staff has recommendation of, well, and let me bring up my staff report so I'm not actually speaking out of turn. And Nikki, if you get there faster. This is item number five, if I remember correctly, that the optional roof terraces be prohibited from the location at the end units of. This is item number five, if I remember correctly, that the optional roof terraces be prohibited from the location at the end units of any building. So there there was a call out from the applicant for the, that it be considered to be able to have those end units have rear balconies. So I'm looking to the commission for consensus on if you're supportive or not. So I see thumbs up.
Clarify, what are we supporting?
Right. The applicant's request to allow them on end units only for rear terraces.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I have a question.
Three, four.
Yeah, I have a question about that before you actually take a vote, if you don't mind. We, I don't know that we had, I don't think I realized that the terraces would be allowed on every unit if if the owner chose them. And I don't know that we've addressed whether or not they're allowed on the front. And so I would just ask the question of the architect. As I look at these, it if, to me, I think what bothers me in some of these, it doesn't feel as if the terrace matches the lower architecture. It just feels a little cut out with a rail on some of them. And and I just wonder if, if one, could you limit the number that would be available on the, you know, on a building so that you wouldn't get so many terraces and and you lose this variation of architecture, which is so delightful? Or is there just a little bit better integration of that rooftop terrace so that it feels more like the the lower? You know, the lower piece. I get where you're coming from and cutting out the roof, but I I think that's worth the discussion because I think just saying that you can or cannot allowing on the end, and we haven't really answered how many you're going to allow along a building.
How about, can we, can we build in a different, a different restriction? And it might be, again, to the point of, and Jane, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, on the back. If they all had them, I don't know that that's a problem. On the front, if they all had them, that is a problem. Which is to say, maybe there's a max percentage of the units in any given building that can have a front?
It only is allowed on the higher buildings, so it's already somewhat restricted, right? So the only the taller buildings can have them. So, you know, if you have a four unit, you're going to get two. If you have a six unit, you're going to get three. And so I guess the question is, do you really want to see three of these rooftops along the front or or along the back? I think that's the question because it will change the look at the street level. Because, yeah.
If you're, if you're late to the party, I mean, if we set, if we set a a percentage threshold of the even the one, the amount of units that can have it in the front. If you're the late to the party, you can still get it to the back.
Okay, I don't think I follow that.
So, so of the high units, right, you have a building of six units.
Yeah.
Which means by default, you're going to have probably, you know, three, three tall units. And if you say only a third, I don't know what the, I don't know what the threshold is, but only a third can do it. And two of those units have already done it. And you're the third guy buying that, buying that tall unit. Well, shoot, you can't get it on the front, but you can still get it on the back. You're not precluded, you're not precluded from from getting a a terrace. You're just precluded from getting it on the front. Would a stipulation like that start to make you feel more comfortable about it?
You know, I I'm looking at the community renderings and it doesn't have a key number on the color. And I, it's, it's, and I'm imagining that if you were to allow two or three on the front, it markedly changes the the hip line, the dormers, they disappear. And all of that wonderful architectural detailing then becomes these cut out roofs. And I, like I said, I don't think I have a problem with it on the back, although I, people and people may find, and you've got some, some designed places along the back sides, I guess. I'm not exactly sure if there's any open spaces along the back, but I really I, I'm just imagining all those cut out roof lines because people like these things and I I get it. That's why I wanted to increase the Juliet balconies, make sure that the porch stoops were deep so that you had that activity on the front, but you didn't necessarily have to cut out the terrace on the front to get that activity. So I'm for them on the back. I don't believe I would like to see them on the front. Unless you came up with a, you know, really great integrated rooftop terrace that didn't look like a cutout. That's my opinion. So I'll let the others discuss it.
Warren, it looks like you have a clarifying question for Jane.
No, I I like that a lot. Terraces on the back, three foot Julietts on the front. And and you're not wrecking any roof lines and and you still have that ability to to be out on the front of your property on the Juliet balcony. I I think that that would really, I think Jane makes an excellent point about the conformity of all those wrecked, with all this architecture put in would disappear if everybody decides they want to a balcony on the front. So balconies on the back, I think you could, everybody could have one if they wanted it.
Mr. Way?
I just wanted to say that we should, before we think about three foot Juliet balconies, we should see what they look like. I'm not sure that you would, you're going to like that look in the composition of these facades. So I I would support that without really understanding what it looked like.
Good point.
Yeah, and and I do appreciate that this application has come a long way and it has been a discussion back and forth, but, you know, credit to the architect. I mean, this, this has come a long way. Mr. Underhill, I'm going to use one of your analogies. We we are at the finish line. So we are there now. Do we toe over the edge? Do we spike the ball? Do we, you know, get hoisted up on shoulders? What happens next? And so I understand there is some concern. I do take Mr. Way's point very it would be a shame for us to have come this far and then say, oh, we want you to have three foot balconies and then have them go up and go, ah. Well, that's not what I thought it was. And so I I think that that would do us a disservice, not just, I mean, not just everyone here in this meeting, applicant and staff and the commission, but the city. I think it would do the city a disservice. So understanding that we have an application on on the table this evening, that we are asked to approve this application, where does that leave the commission? So I understand that there's, you know, the polyurethane and I I heard consensus. I didn't ever sum up mine, but I I think everybody covered that pretty well. My only concern on the polyurethane is the peeling. So if they are painted, then I I've seen polyurethane peel and that makes me a little nervous. Mr. Fishman pointed out reserve studies and HOA funded repair, but it would be nice to not have to have repair. And so that's my only concern there. And then the item five, which is the roof terraces prohibited from end units that the applicant has a request to have that only apply to the front units and not the rear units. To Jane's point, there is the stipulation on the higher units versus the lower units. We have the roof articulation requirement, so that does in every other anyway. So where do we sit as a commission when it comes to front balconies, front terraces, rather? So I see a thumb up. I see two thumbs up, three thumbs up. Mr. Suplack, Mr. Fishman, I need a one way or the other. So it looks like I have five. And so that looks like that is acceptable to the commission. And then rooftop terraces allowed on the back units on those end units, which is contrary to the the rec, the initial recommendations of staff. And I see four immediate, so I think that that one is a go ahead also. So looking back to the commission for any final discussion?
Are you limiting the number on of of front, of rooftop terraces on front facade?
They are automatically limited based on roof articulation unless I understood that incorrectly.
Right. They'd be limited to fifty percent. And and I do think this is a worthy, worthy conversation.
At least fifty percent because if you're, if your initial is your higher roof, then you can go as high as fifty percent. If you have an even numbered building, if you're an odd number building and you start low, then you could maybe get twenty five percent if you have, you know, one unit in there. So I want to make sure that it's not a guaranteed fifty percent. And again, it is only up to those people who choose it and it's not, it's initial owners. Because it's not like second owners get to come back in and say, oh, builder, we want to add that terrace.
Here's the, here's, here's where, here's where it goes. I'm going around the park. Everybody around the park, given the choice between a front or a back, right? Everyone who has the choice between a front or a back is going to choose park side. Right? Which is front. So suddenly you're in the park and every other unit is a terrace on your side.
Right.
Good, bad, or indifferent. So there are going to be moments where the fifty, like the the most that can be taken will be taken. Does that, do we feel any different about putting a different limit on there or not?
I think fifty percent with the understanding that no two can be together. I am comfortable. The roof articulation means that no two terraces, no two adjacent units are going to have terraces. So with those two stipulations, I am comfortable. Looking to the rest of the commission.
Keith has.
I'd like.
And then I'll go.
Sorry.
Keith has.
Go ahead, Keith.
I just wanted to point out that there, there's an additional consideration whereby we're not offering the rooftop terraces that I failed to mention. And that is, in the instance where we have a full gable, reverse gable at the front or a box bay that the roof is engaged into the main roof, we don't have interest in disturbing that architectural element. So the rooftop terraces will not be available on those either. So that would limit the percentage as well.
Limit it even further and that's.
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Keith, is it possible on the, especially on the front facades, if that's, if that's how the commission goes, to really give a good eye to make sure that 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 detail really gives an enhancement to the architecture and isn't, doesn't feel like, you know, just a roof cut out? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, the the inherent with the higher rooftops is a incorporated parapet wall, if you will. It's, I mean, it's, there's, you know, when we initially proposed the rooftop terraces in the lowered roof versions, there was at that point a railing system that needed to be introduced with some trim details on the ends that we started to incorporate. But at this point, that isn't even in the scenario anymore. And last, I just want to remind too, that, you know, three and a half stories up, you know, looking from the sidewalk, I think they're going to be much less visible than we're, than we're thinking. I'm not saying that they'll be completely absent, depending on your vantage point and how far you're looking down the road. But if you could keep that in mind as well, I mean, that's important to understand.
Yeah, and I also think that Kim made a good point. When I said three foot, I just want to see your Juliet balcony somewhat usable. So that's certainly an architectural decision, I think.
All right. Any final discussion? All right. Ms. Martin, if I could have you present the two items that are up for consideration and vote this evening?
Yeah, before, would you like to vote through all of the administrative departures and waivers before we discuss the final development plan conditions? I've been taking some notes, so I just wanted to run them by the group.
Yeah, I I wanted to, because my my iPad is not cooperating right now, I wanted to get them up to make sure I'm not missing anything in my notes to know if we needed to discuss additional items. The only outstanding item I have is for the polyurethane units. No differentiation between upper stories and lower story is, I believe, what I heard consensus wise. I just need to verify that from the commission perspective. That the commission would be accepting of polyurethane elements on all stories. One, two, three, I see. Okay, I'm good.
Is there, do we want to stipulate with that, that we, staff wants to see samples or examples?
Looking to the commission, I kind of see a. Yeah, I I don't see four on that guy. Ms. Martin, over to you. Thank you. So I see the mixing, perfect. I see both of the items that I have in my notes considered here, so looking to you, commission, for validation. All right, now, applicant on number seventeen. I want to ensure that that is something that is acceptable, that you understand what the criteria is based on the discussion this evening. Landscape design details for that gateway corner.
Yeah, I think, I think we do. I heard artwork or fountain, I think, on the text exchanges among our group, we think a fountain would be tough, but I think artwork would be something we'd be willing to investigate. So.
We do have a fantastic arts council, so we'd love to partner with you in that investigation and there are some opportunities there.
Yeah, and I think I've I've seen that before on other projects I've been involved in. I think that's a great idea and I, so I'll just set the expectation that in in working going forward on this, that's probably where we'll go with it.
Thank you for confirmation, Mr. Underhill. Okay, so, yes, Ms. Martin.
And then for the record, on the landscape design, it would be staff's expectation that granite be incorporated into the landscape design instead of concrete in all applications. So a mix of materials, brick, granite and concrete.
So Mr. Underhill, looking back to you, Mr. Filipkowski.
That's above my pay grade. I'm just a lawyer, so I'll let one of these other guys answer that one.
Matt, did you want?
Could you clarify with what the recommendation was there, Nikki?
Yeah, so the intent was to carry forward some of Mr. Way's comments regarding your potentially, I believe it's a concrete curb and or a seat wall that potentially may be better integrated with the Bridge Street District streetscape if it were granite. And so it's not a holistic redesign of the space, but elevating some of the material selections.
Yeah, we're talking about on that curved planter bed on the gateway park area, right?
Correct. So only for the gateway open space.
Yeah, I think, you know, a a material or design other than maybe concrete as it was proposed, whether it be granite or another, you know, material that we could work, work with staff to come up with a good, good solution to it.
Wonderful.
So Nikki, if you could add that clarification there. Ms. Box, did you have another item?
I'll just, we're in final development plan. So did we come to a decision on the garage detail and the railing? Is that an additional condition? I don't know that we actually, you know, came to consensus on that.
So looking to the rest of the commission, that was something that was voiced, but I didn't hear it from multiple people?
Yeah.
I'm seeing three. Can I get show of thumbs again, whether supportive or not supportive of the change, the requirement? Mr. Way? Hey, I'm not supportive. All right.
It's still within, it's still an option, Keith.
I understand.
All right, then Nikki, and did we cover conditions for both items? So both agenda items, sorry.
Uh, we have not, but I was typing when you discussed the last item. So are we adding something regarding garage doors or no?
No.
Not a requirement, no.
Okay.
Suggestion, not requirement.
So we've covered all of the conditions for the final development plan. Did you want to review the final plat conditions?
So commission, do you want to vote on these at the same time or do you want to separate them out?
We'll still need to do two motions.
Yes, I, I essentially wanted to know if they wanted to get one checked off or because these are so intertwined, if we wanted to cover them together. So why don't we go forward with the conditions on the second item and then we'll cover both motions at the end. All right. Did we get, Nikki, did we get covered in there, the, the public art piece in the gateway on the, the last one? Yeah, I, I, I'd be okay with it if it didn't say the applicant revised the landscape plan specifically to, oh, okay, yes, never mind, it's late, I can't read. That's why I skipped over public art when specifically to incorporate, incorporate and to increase granite brick. Okay, you, you are more intelligent than I am this evening.
Ms. Call, could, could I, on this particular one, could, could we say and/or? I don't know that all of them necessarily want to be corporate incorporated.
I, I do think that there was a, a requirement from the commission to incorporate an additional material. And I heard that there was support of public art. So let me get clarity from the commission, so.
Well, I, I guess I meant, I'm sorry, if you go back Nikki, where it says and to increase granite brick and other accent would be and or other accent.
Yes, I, I believe that is doable, understanding what the commission members said this evening. So Nikki, if you could just change that and to an and/or.
Are we eliminating concrete?
Uh, we're, we're supplementing concrete with other high quality materials.
Is there a percentage or?
And no, but I think we can do work with staff, Nikki. I believe that you have enough clarity there to correct me if I'm wrong. To understand what the desire of the commission is.
Yeah, I think we can make this a collaborative effort between staff as well as the applicant to implement the direction discussed this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. All right, looking back to the commission, the second one, those, those conditions were relatively straightforward and I believe holistically supported by both staff and well, by all, including staff, applicants, seeing some head nods and the commission this evening. Any further discussion? Then at this time, I will entertain a motion for item number one, if I can get my browser back cooperating. So this first item is to approve administrative departures. There are four departures. Thank you, Ms. Martin. I hadn't looked. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Thank you, Mr. Supalack. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Um, I have a second item, motion number two, to approve waivers. There are 12 waivers. So Mr. Boggs, looking to you this evening, in what format specifically would you recommend if the commission opts to recommend approval of 10 of 12?
So my recommend.
Do we just make a motion to accept staff's recommendations?
Right, yeah, my recommendation would be to, to move approval of the 10 recommended by staff.
No call out for the disapproval?
No, because you're, you're moving for an action of the board and a disapproval is not really an action, it's more of an inaction.
Understood, thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move.
Can you clarify, Mr. Grimes?
Move to approve the 10 staff recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes. Uh, motion number three, to approve the final development plan. And Nikki, could you present the conditions? So did we end up at 16 also, having subtracted one and added another?
We did.
All right, I will entertain a motion for approval of the final development plan with the 16 conditions as displayed here with the changes made this evening.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Supalack. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yeah.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. And the final motion for this item this evening, motion four, to recommend approval to city council for the final development plan. Do I have a motion?
Both.
Second.
Mr. Fish? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Fishman? Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Well, gentlemen, it has been a wonderful evening, this evening. I, I'm here trying to, to look up also, I believe it's a Kirby shuffle. Is there an appropriate measure to do a Kirby shuffle at this point in time? Uh, gentlemen, it's been a pleasure working on this project with you to get it to where it is. We are certainly looking forward to vertical, vertical items going up in that block. We understand it's been a long road. Thank you for your patience and thank you for working with us to accomplish this. It, it's been a, a labor of love, I think, with everyone involved. But we understand and appreciate that 99% of the labor was done on your side. So thank you.
Now, that, thank you all for the process. We've ended up with a fantastic product. And this is an example of how public-private partnerships, I think, can work. So thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill.
Kudos all.
Thank you.
All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, as we come to the conclusion of our meeting this evening, it is time for communications. Are there any items for discussion from staff to the commission this evening? I do want to express our appreciation to staff on the Monday night training session. I believe that, that was well worth our time and investment. We, it's nice to get level set occasionally and sometimes we don't do a very good job at practicing what we learn. But hopefully we get better and better with each iteration and we work together to create a team atmosphere that is constructive, not just for the applicants before us, but for each other and certainly between the communication between the commission and staff. Any other communication items? Jane, how's it going on council? Anything that you have to bring back to us as far as goals or desires?
Oh, listen, you know, if it wasn't, if it wasn't 10:30, I don't have my council book in front of me. Just that the 2035 plan, we are, council is starting to think about big ideas. And we will be bringing all of our commission members forward to begin to do some brainstorming on envisioning 2035. So I promise you at the next one, I will report back to you any of the details on that. Jenny can help me with that. And to tell you that I am just darned brain dead right now, so I can't think of a darn thing we talked about last Mon- Monday. So I will definitely bring back some information for you at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Grimes, did I see your hand go up?
I, I just wanted to make sure from Thad's perspective that we dealt with the recommendation of the plat. That wasn't supposed to be a fifth motion, was it? It was incorporated within the development plan, correct? Those aren't two different items.
I only had four on my chair agenda.
I, I, I got that, but in the notes, it looked like there was the final plat and then there was the final development plan. I just want to make sure that, that we weren't missing something there.
Yeah, there should be, there should be a motion on a recommendation. There should be a recommendation of approval of a final plat and then your decision on the final development plan, which would be two separate actions.
Yeah, we did. That was, that was motion three and four. So we had, motion one was the approval of the administrative departures. Two was waivers. Three was final development plan. Four was, oh, final development plan again. So the 16 conditions and the four conditions on three and four. So were those two?
On your chair agenda, so your fourth motion was final plat. And that was what was displayed at the time of your voting with.
Fantastic.
For a condition.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we're covered.
Thank you for the call out.
No, that's good.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 10:30 at night. I hope you all have very quick to sleep events this evening. And I will see you next time. Thanks so much.